All right. First of all, let's not keep anybody wait-- let's not keep everybody waiting anymore. Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Corneille.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Mayor Dosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Conne.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Councilmember Hu.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Five present.
Thank you. And so, thank you all very much for coming tonight. Welcome to Ventura Community Center and our first Town Hall meeting of 2019. And I'm not sure we did any in 2018 either, did we? So we're going to try to rectify that. But tonight is really a check-in with the community. We have a lot of ongoing work relative to Ventura, so this evening's going to have an opportunity to confirm that hopefully that we're on the right track or where we might want to make some course corrections. So our agenda this evening consists of two parts. The first segment is an opportunity for general comments, and after introduction from staff, we'll invite members of the public to make any comments related to the Ventura neighborhood issues. So this is a special meeting tonight. It's not a regular council meeting, and so we're not doing general oral communications on variety of topic, Stanford GUP, stuff like that. The second focus segment, we're going to have a report specifically from the North Ventura Working Group. It's specifically focused on the NVCAP, and we'll have a presentation by our consultant and comments from the working group, and then followed by council discussion and feedback. If members of the public are not sure which segment your comments relate to, I'd invite you to comment early so that that'll allow staff to confirm issues that fit into the NVCAP scope versus others. It's our intent to schedule a few more Town Hall meetings in other neighborhoods this year, and so we're going to beta-test this a little bit here and look at what works and where we can adjust so that we can do some more of these. I would like to acknowledge the participation and input of Palo Alto Neighborhoods and the Ventura Neighborhood Association was very, very much appreciated. Becky Sanders and group in providing helpful suggestions to our city manager. Thank you. On how to do this tonight. Let's see. We also invite members of the public that couldn't make it this evening to submit comments by email. And all that said, we have a lot to do this year and ongoing in Ventura, and so now I want to turn this over to our city manager, who will provide some comments on behalf of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're experimenting a little bit with the AV as well. So this is sort of the Brown Act, council meeting meets the having relatives over for the holidays. Folks may be climbing over each other on the sofas, and sorry, I'm over here if anyone needs to figure out who's where that disembodied voice is coming from. So, good evening. My name's Ed Chikada. I'm your new, relatively new still, city manager here in Palo Alto, so really my pleasure to be able to provide some brief comments. Did want to spend a little bit of time doing a couple of things. Whoops, there's over the sofa, right there. Case in point. To just provide a little bit of context for the discussion this evening, as the mayor pointed out, this is really an opportunity for check-in. And oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, as I can see, folks, this is the vantage point of being up in front. You can see the sunglasses required on half of the room. The other half are in the shade, so hopefully within the next 20 minutes or so it'll be all equalized and folks will be able to see. We did want to touch on the National Citizen Survey, which the city does every year as our community scan, and highlight a few things that might be notable. When the council did its annual retreat a little more than a month ago, one of the elements that was suggested is that we highlight geographic-specific findings coming out of the National Citizen Survey as a way simply to confirm or again bring to light some of the sub-area differences in terms of feedback from residents, and also hit on a few other items that we have in the works at the city. I did want to introduce staff that are present. We have a number of our department directors here available both to answer questions as well as hopefully folks have been able to say hello if you haven't met them in person, so I'll need to start off with that. We have our police chief, Bob Johnson. They're not all used to getting applause, so I think they appreciate that along the way. Our Public Works Director, Brad Eggleston. Our Emergency Services Director, Ken Duker. From the Library and Community Services Department, Monique Lacon Giuzinhani. Also for the Community Services Department, Chief Operating Officer, Kristen O'Kane. Our Chief Inform-- excuse me, Chief Communications Officer Claudia Keith is here. Also our Director of Information Technology, excuse me, Darren Numoto. And if I didn't miss anyone else, our City Attorney Molly Stump is also here and gleefully in the back of the room as opposed to in the front of the room for a change. All right, did I miss any of our department heads here?
Jonathan.
Oh, Jonathan late, unless I forget. Jonathan will take up lots of airtime a little later, so sorry, Jonathan. All right, so with that, let me touch on the community scan. Again, hopefully no surprise, and with apologies, I know this is completely unreadable even with the best light, but what really wanted to simply do was to take the opportunity to draw some observations out of the National Citizen Survey. Now, this is a document, again, that has been posted on our website, so with apologies here, I'll try to describe what's on the screen. We had pulled and circulated as part of the package for tonight's Town Hall, the actual sheets, all of the sheets out of the National Citizen Survey that provide geographic-specific information, and I just wanted to highlight a few things that again are hopefully not surprises and I'm sure reiterate observations that others have had. In the citywide survey, there are sub-areas that do have reports, and the Ventura neighborhood is part of what's called SubArea 4 or Area 4 that also includes Charleston Meadows, Monroe Park, Palo Alto Archards, Barron Park, Green Acres, Greater Miranda, Esther Clark Park, and Palo Alto Hills. So fairly large area, but nonetheless, oh, wait a minute, that's not right. It's not, excuse me. There is, that description's not right. My apologies, I'm reading off of the map. But in any case, it is larger than Ventura. So want to highlight a few observations here in terms of, let's see, question? I can't even read that, sorry. Give me a second here. Table 7, which provides some indication around retirement and quality of life. We do have citywide rating or question of Palo Alto as a place to retire and overall quality of life in Palo Alto. In the citywide tabulation, Palo Alto as a place to retire is considered overall 40% favorable, excellent or good, and in Area 4, that number is at 27%. Again, what I'll be highlighting, and you will see something of a trend here, that these are areas in which this Area 4 has pretty consistently reflected a perception of being at the lower end of the spectrum. So again, perhaps no surprise, but I will provide a bit of context at the end. The same for overall quality of life, where citywide, the excellent or good was at 84 and in Area 4 it's 73%. Another notable area is in walking and connectivity, where citywide, again, the excellent or good for, in this case, walking in Palo Alto was at 83%. Area 4 reflected a 74% excellent or good. And again, in many other communities, 74 would be considered excellent, but again, we're highlighting some of the relative differences in response. And in the case of availability of paths and walking trails, while citywide 73% excellent or good, in Area 4 it was a 65. Let me just quickly hit a couple of others. Quality of new development, citywide excellent or good at 48%, but in Area 4 listed at 38%. Moving on to connectivity and neighborliness, in the case, well, that's the overall category, in the case of specific questions around using bus, rail, or other transportation, where citywide there was a 52% indication of a person had used at least once, the Area 4 result was 42%. Again, 52 citywide, 42 in Area 4. And not too big a difference, but still on the lower end of the extreme, on the talked-to or visited immediate neighbors, citywide 90%, and in Area 4 it was 86%. In terms of overall rating of the city, citywide at 82% excellent or good for the city in this particular case, and in Area 4 it was 75%. Then a couple of last slides of note. Palo Alto overall, we highlighted some of the citywide numbers, and I'll just use one example of the value of services or tax for taxes paid to Palo Alto, where citywide it was a 58% excellent or good, and Area 4 it was 54. So again, a trend, one might argue still very strong positive results overall, but one, again, that we have seen pretty consistent Area 4 responses that indicate slightly lower ratings than we see for the city as a whole. So, that said, one would argue that's why we're here. Part of the ongoing effort related to both the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan as well as the Town Hall, an opportunity here to have check-in. We will be talking later on, as we speak to the Coordinated Area Plan, some of the ongoing elements of the North Ventura CAP work. But on the bright side, I would note that this is not a new issue, and as part of the discussion, I know that we've got a report around historic resources that is in the works, and I did want to quote, now, this report is not out yet, but since it's quoting a third-party source, I think it's fair game, that acknowledges that the history of the area dates back to the Mayfield annexation, and some of the issues of concern following Leland Stanford's attempt to talk Mayfield into going dry in order to be a location for faculty to live, which was politely turned down at the time, following which he pursued what ultimately became Palo Alto. And back then, as a result, as the difference between Mayfield and Palo Alto became evident, there was a reference to a quote in Board of Trustees for the Mayfields in 1904, where the quote was, "Mayfield people are tired of having the roughs from all over the country come here, get drunk, and raise a row. We're tired of renting our cottages for $5 and $6 a month when a house can't, a house can't be had in Palo Alto for $20 or $25." In 1904, Mayfield voters, realizing their earlier mistake, finally did ban the saloons, but Mayfield continued to be overshadowed in competition with their northerly neighbor. In 1905, Mayfield accused Palo Alto of unsisterly conduct, claiming Palo Alto had blocked the building of a road from Mayfield to Stanford's main quad. So, well, this is the reason we're here. Clearly, these are not new issues and issues that as we continue the work for the greater, now, city of Palo Alto, provide us some context. So I did want to just note that. My last comments is to acknowledge that we do have a number of other projects that are ongoing in addition to the NVCAP work. As many know, one issue of traffic has been an ongoing topic, and we do have a referral from the council to scope and prioritize traffic study for commuter cut-through traffic in the area. The only question at this point is where NVCAP scope will end and this additional work will pick up. In addition, we've had, we know there's interest in parking, in parking enforcement. Police Department could respond to that if and when questions are raised here this evening. Did want to note that we have a capital improvement project as a part of the CIP report that the council received. It's an informational report for tonight, that in fact, this facility itself is due for some both ADA, Americans with Disability Act upgrades, as well as mechanical and electrical upgrades. Oh, you can applaud for that, that's fine. And also, item that I know many are interested in, we are pursuing the purchase of the property adjacent to Bull War Park. The city has submitted an offer and is in consultation with CBRE. Thank you very much. And we will keep the council and the public informed as those negotiations proceed. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you and stand by for any questions.
So at this point, we're going to open this to public speakers, if there are any. And we have cards, and so I have a few cards. And the first speaker will be Claire Elliott.
Hello. Hi, my name's Claire Elliott, and I live on Chestnut Avenue. My husband and I moved there 20 years ago after renting around the corner on Fernando and learning about the block parties they had, and actually, regular potlucks on Chestnut. We were very happy to be able to purchase a home, which we only were able to do because it was 730 square feet for our family of four, which was a little tight, but we made it work. I have loved being in this neighborhood, but there are some things that I feel like we have been kind of the poorer second cousins in the neighborhood. One of the issues I ran into was around the AT&amp;T switching station and the high-pitched whine it was making at all times of day and night, and I went to code enforcement, and there was not even, there was a list of phone numbers for what neighborhood you were in? Ventura wasn't even on the list at the time, so that was a little bit of a bummer, and it took several years to get them to finally shut that thing off. It wasn't until after they applied for a permit for more cell towers, and then they turned it off because they wanted to be able to get everybody to say, "No, there's no problems with AT&amp;T." Then they brought it back on, and that's when I really said, "This is ridiculous." So anyway, that's done and it's gone away, let's hope for good. There was also an opportunity for a police station where they were going to do a property switch and make it possible for somebody to build on a parking lot that's down on Park Boulevard at what used to be the old Adulent Building. Well, I'm a senior ecologist with Grassroots Ecology, and I was appalled because in the early '90s, I guess, I worked for an environmental consulting company, and we held that property up as an example of one of the best sites for stormwater management. And they were thinking about putting buildings on top of this beautifully designed parking area, and so I was delighted when that also got shut down. But these are just some examples of things that I have been worried about. I'd love to see the city be more biophilic, I don't know if anybody knows that term, but making it more friendly for nature, so opening up the creek along Matador Creek would be lovely, possibly doing something to help Barron Creek as well, because it's, that's our main constriction because of it going under the train tracks, that's why our neighborhood gets flooded anyway. Bringing in more native trees in our public areas, and I'd love more help from the city in removing invasive species. That's one of the things we do as an organization, and I don't know if all of you know what a privet looks like, but I'd bet at least half the people in this room have a privet in their yard that is increasingly getting to large tree size, and the birds will be pooping purple spots all over our car windows, and then it doesn't provide habitat value like our native trees do. So that's just a quick rundown. I'd love to see the neighborhood stay affordable. I mean, it's not anymore, right? I mean, we need to do something to make it more friendly for low-income communities and houses. The multipurpose housing might help, I mean, the larger-scale housing might help with that, but we need to make a large percentage of them affordable housing. And also, I'd like to see things like the limitations on using Airbnb as an income stream be a little bit loosened up. I hear that you can't do that if you don't have neighbors' approval for people to come and go more quickly than a month. I don't know if that's the case, but that's what I've been told. And my husband and I are looking at it as a way to be able to retire to this neighborhood, having some income stream like that, that we could continue to be able to live here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Becky San-San-San.
This is for Claire. This is for me. Okay. So, wow. So I just want to make sure that anyone knows they can come up and speak and give a speaker card to Beth, Ms. Minor, our city clerk, so that she can get you into the queue if you have anything you want to say about Ventura in general and not the NVCAP, because we're going to do the NVCAP afterwards. Just want to make sure, Eric, you were very clear, but I know people want to say, I think they're, I know people want to speak, I think people are shy. Okay. Thank you, City Council, for this. Thank you, city staff, for putting this together for us. This is beautiful. Thank you, working group people, for coming here and making this, I feel so, my heart feels full tonight because I've lived in Ventura since 2000, Scott, when did we move in here? 2000, 2001? And I want to tell my, a little bit of my story, and I hope I don't get too emotional, but we could not afford anything in Palo Alto. We've been renting and renting, and we finally found this house of this grandmother, Johnny Silar, on the corner of Arinda and Margarita, and her daughter and granddaughter lived next door, and she had cousins this way and that way. And I was just so grateful to be able to find a house that I could afford, that I didn't realize that I was gentrifying the neighborhood. And, you know, I'd read about gentrification, and I didn't realize that I could participate in it, because I could afford, because my husband made a little bit of extra money one year, we could actually do a down payment. Okay, so I'm actually guilty of what I don't want to see happen further, was that, is that we still have a super diverse neighborhood. There are African-American people, there are Japanese people, I know that there are elders who, when they were children, were in camps, and it's just a beautiful realization that I have come, that I just love my neighborhood so much, and I don't want to live in any other neighborhood that doesn't have the same warmth. So, anyway, with that in mind, Ventura, we want to keep the diversity, we want to keep, we love that Wilton Court got approved, and we're going to keep pushing for low-income and housing for service people. We're going to push for commercial, thank you, and teachers. We're going to push for commercial that is retail-serving us. I like technology. Technology got us our house, I'm going to say it, but the technology is not, doesn't do anything for the quality of life of the people in the neighborhood. So we want the technology, but we want it where, you know, maybe it's concentrated near the bay or something like that, or someplace else, but we want to preserve commercial that it serves the community. We want, I'm hearing about this medical facility that is looking to expand that will serve Medi-Cal-type people, and I just want, and we love Buena Vista's across the street and Barron Park, they share a lot of our concerns and interests, so. Anyway, I'm sorry to get all emotional, and I just wanted to apologize to the black families and the Asian families, that that was the only place they could buy, and I just, I'm sorry that I participated in the switching of your neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Special thanks to Becky. Thank you, City Council. I'm Jonathan Brown. I'm also the Chair of the Ventura Parks Committee. I'm especially interested and very glad to hear that the city has submitted an offer to purchase the parcel adjacent to Bull War Park. I'm going to ask some questions. I know this format doesn't lend itself to answers, but perhaps my points will be made through the questions. I wanted to ask first what you think of our wonderful community center. It sounds like you are considering upgrades, and that's great. I would ask when we might see those upgrades. I think we'd be interested in that. What are you doing to help vehicle dwellers move to more suitable living locations under more humane conditions? Why is there not more homeless resource, homeless services outreach for people who really need it, in particular, some of the children I see around the park a lot? We could use some more help. How will you ensure that the years-long construction disruption that we have seen on Park Boulevard, with its near-permanent blockage of bike lanes and sidewalks, will end and will not continue as we move into execution of the North Ventura Coordinated Action Plan? When are the telephone poles that block our sidewalks in violation of ADA and other laws in various locations going to be removed? What is being done to enforce city code on ground-floor neighborhood-serving retail, like replacing the Cooper Cafe warehouse at the end of my block on Fernando, and putting in a real coffee shop, or filling in vacant spots along El Camino? How can we make the safe routes to school safer for our kids and away from places like the smokes and vapes shop where the current safe route to school for my kids goes past? These are some of the things on our mind. I know some of them are citywide, and thanks again for being here tonight and listening to our concerns.
Thank you for being here, councilmembers. I moved into this community, I think I'm the last person in Palo Alto that bought a house for under $200,000, let's put it that way. And so I moved into the Ventura neighborhood for a lot of reasons, one of which is that I had a mixed-race family, and it was a place where we really fit in. And I really want to echo what Becky said. I think that was something that was important to me about Ventura, and that I hope stays important, and only affordable housing will help that, and affordable single-family housing, not just apartments or townhouses. So I really want to put that forth. And Becky, I don't think you gentrified the neighborhood really very much. And the other plug I want to put in as a longtime resident is that even before I moved in, I imagine, because for these, whatever it's been, 23 years, every spring, a mother duck walks her babies down the Park Boulevard to the creek. And, you know, sometimes the neighbors go out and shepherd, and some years we had too many cats, and we rounded them all up so that they wouldn't. And I just want those little ducks to have their place. I have no idea where they nest. They sort of just appear, and there they are. So as we're doing our planning, and I know I went to the planning meeting the night of, the night of the President's emergency, I was at the planning meeting, and, you know, people talked about opening up the park, the, making green space along the river. And I think not just green space for us, but for our animal friends who have lived here longer than we have. Clearly, it's generations of ducks, it's not the same duck, right? So I want to, that's my plug, you know? I want to see a mixed-race neighborhood and a mixed-economic neighborhood. I've worked in nonprofits my whole life, there was no way I could move into Palo Alto today, and for our little animal friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. With that, we return to council for questions and comments. Adrian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, thank you very much, city staff, for hosting this and setting this all up, and thank you all for coming tonight. It's nice to get a meeting out in a neighborhood, kind of different from city hall. This was really brief, but I would encourage everybody to go look through the longer packet, which has a lot more data points specific to this neighborhood and this area. I just wanted to highlight, I guess, for my colleagues, a couple that stood out for me. So on page 19 of the larger report, some of the lower ratings were in the areas of fitness, open space, and recreational activities, ability to walk to places-- fitness, open space, and recreational activities, ability to walk to places and things like that. I think a couple of the speakers touched on that tonight. But as we consider our next item and continue working on the North Ventura cap, I think those are some areas we probably want to push a bit more. Something else I noticed, though, that kind of struck a positive note for me, this neighborhood actually has higher levels of engagement in clubs and religious activities. So, it's not, it's not all bad, and I thought that was one little interesting point. And then finally, something that a few of the speakers mentioned, and we've heard, I think, in many different forums, that Ventura sometimes feels it's not treated fairly compared to other neighborhoods, or is kind of the stepchild, something along those lines. And that's, that's borne out in the data. On page 33, there's a lower rating for treating all residents fairly. So hopefully, this meeting is a first step to addressing that, but we should continue considering those data points, I think, with the NV cap. And that's just what I wanted to call out. Thank you.
It's delightful to be back here. Thank you so much for, for hosting us. I'll point out, this is also a facility for Palo Alto Community Childcare, so I'm sure they would welcome the improvements that we're planning. I think the, thank you, Vice Mayor Fine, for highlighting ones that I had noted as well. I think the thing that jumped out for me, though, was the biking, how many people bike in this area? And if I think about that, as we have our bike pedestrian plans, you know, paused for the moment, it certainly, I've heard from a number of people, not just people who live here, that working on Park Boulevard, possibly in, you know, in parallel with what we're doing with the working area plan, is an appropriate thing for us to be considering. So that's, that's one thing I'd like to highlight. And thank you all so much for being here and welcoming us.
Did I see you get another card, Beth? Okay. I want to add my thanks to Allison's and Adrian's. Thank you guys for having us. Yeah, sorry, I'm just not talking a lot. Thirty years like this, right? Anyway, thank you very much for having us here, and we don't get out of the office enough, and so this is, this is a good thing to do.
Just one quick question. A gentleman asked about when they can expect the upgrades for this building. Do we know where that is in the pipeline?
Actually, Brad, you still here? I'm wondering if it'd be worth explaining a little bit. There he is, he popped back in on the Ventura Community Center.
Brad, I was just wondering what the schedule is for the updates for this, this community center, and what may be involved specifically.
Oh, good evening. Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works. So there have been some updates and maintenance work even done recently, parking lot work, roofs on most of the buildings were replaced in the last year. Some of the improvements that are still pending, one is to add air conditioning to this building and to the administration building. New electrical panels and transformers and ADA improvements, those are the other key pieces. We actually intended to move forward with some of that work last summer, and bids that were received for the work were so high that additional funding for the project is under consideration during the city's budget process this year. So depending on how the budget process goes, then we would rebid and potentially begin the work this summer.
Thanks. Okay, with that, I think we will move on to the next piece of this, and so I'm going to turn this over to, I believe, the planning staff, who's going to discuss sort of where we're going to, where we're going to go next with the NV cap group. And I welcome Jonathan Lay, Planning Director.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Jonathan Lay, the Planning Director. Just want to introduce Elena Lee, who's going to walk you through a brief presentation. Elena is our project manager for the, for staff on the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. After a brief presentation, Elena will introduce Giti with Perkins Will, our consultant, who will have about a 15-minute presentation to walk you through what we've accomplished so far and a look ahead. And before we begin on that, I just wanted to bring the council and the community's attention to an "at places" memo that we provided. This is some, we've received, since the packet was produced, we've received some information about the Frye's site and the historic significance of that property. The report itself is not ready for release, but we believe that the findings are going to remain consistent between now and when we have that document. When we do, we'll present it to the working group and the public for an opportunity to think about the implications of that and some of the policy challenges we will have ahead as we seek to provide housing and while respecting our cultural heritage for this neighborhood. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elena. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan is basically a 60-acre site founded by Page Mill Road to the north, that Caltrain tracks along Park Boulevard to the east, Lambert Avenue to the south, and El Camino Real to the west. It's also located within the larger 95-acre California Avenue Party development area. The NV cap is a direct outcome of the comp plan update. The coordinated area plan, which is similar to a specific plan in other communities, is identified in the comp plan as a tool to guide development where significant change is foreseeable. So the NV cap was specifically identified in Program L 4.10.1 as a priority for the city. So so far, the city has only had one coordinated area plan, basically for the south-of-force area, adopted in early 2000. The plan basically states that the, or, basically, what council has adopted has said that the plan should describe a vision as a walkable mixed-use area, neighborhood with multifamily housing, ground-floor retail, public park, creek improvements, and interconnected street grid. So in terms of the history of the project so far, the project was initially kicked off in November 2017, where the council adopted a resolution of support and commitment to the preparation of the cap. This was a result of a grant that the city received to fund the project. It's a federal grant. And March 5th, the city council adopted preliminary goals, objectives, schedule, and planned boundaries. And it also authorized the formation of a working group, which was, which was appointed in April 30th, 2018. So after the working group was appointed, we held the first working group meeting in October 2018. We've had three meetings so far. And on February the 5th, we held our first community workshop, where the project was introduced, and we heard quite a bit from the public on that project. And tonight, we have our first city council check-in, where we're actually checking with council to make sure that we are moving the project in the right direction. The process for the coordinated area plan is established by Palo Alto Municipal Code Chapter 19.10. And the emphasis for this section of the code is to emphasize that this needs to include enhanced opportunities for public involvement. So the cap should provide policies, development regulations, and design guidelines consistent with the comp plan. So the general process for this would consist of the council initiating the cap, which we did back in 2017. The working group is appointed to help provide guidance to staff, the PTC, and the city council. And then the process includes regular public meetings, including the working group meetings, and then also council, periodic council check-ins, as well as community meetings. So after the plan is put together, it's taken to the Planning and Transportation Commission on the draft product, as well as environmental review, and then it goes to city council for final action. So the cap consists of the following items. First is about the distribution of land uses. The second would be distribution of public infrastructure to support the land uses. And then it also includes program for implementation measures, such as public works projects and financing. The document will also include design and development standards. And as part of this, there's also a determination of economic and fiscal feasibility. And then as part of all that, it's also included the Associate Environmental Review, which will include the historic report that was, that is being prepared. So the project included the hiring back in June of 2018 of Perkins and Will, which is a very experienced planning firm with Bay Area and international experience. And they're supported by a team of subconsultants, including Arab for Transportation, Strategic Economics for Economic Analysis, Plan-to-Place for Outreach, BKF Engineers for Infrastructure, and David J. Powers as Environmental Consultant. And as Jonathan stated, that we do have historic report that we're currently trying to finalize, and that will be released hopefully shortly. And with that, I'll introduce Giti Silwal, the Principal for Perkins and Will.
Thank you, Elena. Good evening, council members. We will, I'll take you quickly through where we are in terms of doing this project. It's a quick overview. We want to take, show you where we are on the schedule and what the work we have done to date, with a clear understanding of where we have, what we have found as part of our project background and context study. The working groups, they're all here, thank you all, have been really helpful in kind of really steering the conversation and having the dialogue that's necessary for this project. The community, we've met with them, and we'll be sharing you some of the really high-level findings and input that we've received from the working group and the community. It's still an early phase in the project. We've just completed the existing conditions, and we are starting to evolve some thinking on the plans and the options for the site. So far, we've had three working groups, and the whole structure of the project has been set in a way where we're constantly working alongside the working group and really getting their thoughts and input to inform the project. The three working groups, we've had three working group meetings, and we had have one community meeting so far, and we're here today. There is definitely a long way to go in terms of developing the plan options and creating a draft plan before we kind of come back to you with more, for more input. The site, just jumping into the site, Elena kind of walked us through the boundaries, but for a large part, there's a good mix of residential units, both single-family and multifamily. I'm sorry, the colors are all washed, so even if I call out colors, they might not be exactly how they're appearing on screen. But it's shown in like a translucent yellow, a single-family, and in purple, the multifamily. But for the majority part of the site, it's actually office and services and retail. If you really squint your eyes, you'll see almost one-third of the site is actually pretty underutilized. It's surface parking that's serving the users. And our quick findings from our consultants, when they did survey it during AM peak hour, revealed that only 41% of the off-street parking was utilized during PRC, and 63% of on-street parking. So there's room there in terms of really helping think of the right kind of use for the area within the site. The parkland, the city has a recommendation as per the policies that every housing unit should be within at least a half-mile walking distance from open space. And if you look at this diagram, the open spaces are called out in green, and the dark brown color is showing the 1/4 mile area around the park, and the yellows are basically the half-mile. So, close to the site, which is called out in the black dash, you have Bullware Park, and you have the Stanford Palo Alto playing field, and the Saravalas Park. But having heard the working group and the community, we do, they have pointed us that this community is underserved for open space. One of the other things that have been highlighted, that we have been brought to our attention, is that this area has also been called out as the, to be studied for the urban canopy target area. Just taking a look at where this site sits, it's pretty close to the Caltrain Station, and it is a planned development area because of its proximity. And it is definitely a very attractive site for many of the tech companies, so we should, we are mindful of that. However, it is, right now, it has, doesn't have the best connectivity. We have the El Camino Real and the Page Mill moving on to the Ollone, sorry, Oregon Express Way as ways to connect to the region, but there is, there isn't much of a connectivity in the way, the way, even though it's positioned close to the Caltrain, it hasn't really lent itself to be a really thriving neighborhood. This is an isochrone. The way we kind of read this is, if you look at the black dot, and you want to draw lines or radius for anybody to walk five minutes, that's the darkest kind of area that's shown in the map. And then it's a 10-minute radius, and a 15-minute radius is shown in the yellow, 15-minute walking distance is shown in the yellow color. You see that the connectivity, north-south connectivity seems to be doing well until you hit the railroads. But the east-west connectivity, you really don't have a chance to cross Page Mill, because there isn't much of, there aren't crosswalks that really help you in making that connection. So even though California Avenue and the Caltrain Station are close by, they aren't really the most walkable in terms of good connective, connectivity across Page Mill. This is a graphic showing the volume of bikes, bicyclists, on the streets. Just the larger circles tell you there's more volume on a certain street. So Park Boulevard definitely with its bike infrastructure lends itself for more bike volume, and people really do prefer that. There are definitely smaller circles on El Camino Real, so there is a need to kind of improve bike infrastructure on that street, on that avenue, and that'll definitely help in better connectivity. But also the fact that people are trying to actually cross Page Mill to get on further to the Stanford Research Park area, and that's really not kind of facilitated by any kind of a good intersection and good crossing for bicyclists. So there's definitely a lot of improvement required along the edges. The next slide talks about the local transit and bikeways. There is good transit connection on both on El Camino Real and California Avenue, so the kind of last-mile, first-mile trips required from the Caltrain Station seems to kind of work, though the community has told us that there isn't good service for the line, for Route 22. So that's definitely something that needs to be looked into. And yes, definitely looking to improve more bikeway connections through the site and on the perimeter streets. The next slide talks about the volume of traffic. Again, El Camino Real and Page Mill have more, have heavier traffic volume, but there is, as compared to the streets on the site itself, but there is cut-through traffic that is trying to connect, going up on Olive and then turning left on Ash, trying to get on to Oregon Express Way. So there's definitely some more traffic movement and circulation happening on the side on those two streets. Moving on to development activities, these are called out in the gray color on the graphic, and there have been seven development activities of different kinds, condos and retail, mostly apartments on the, on Park Boulevard, and then condos and retail along El Camino Real. The following slide basically talks about parcel ownership, and each color represent, represents a single owner. So there are definitely some large parcels owned by a single entity, but there are also quite a few single-family owners in the site area. The residential permitting slide, this is a quick snapshot of where the city is in terms of meeting its target that is defined by RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So we are right at the midpoint of the duration, the eight-year duration, the 2015, 2020, 23 duration, where the targets were set by RENA for Palo Alto, which was a little under 2,000 units. And what's very evident through this graph is that the... And what's very evident through this graph is that the bars basically call out the number of houses that are, that should be allocated for the different user, for the different housing types. It's very low affordable, very low housing, low median, low income housing, the, I can't read this, the moderate and the, and the, and the, sorry, thank you so much, and above moderate. So the city is doing pretty well in terms of meeting its target for the above moderate housing need, but there's definitely ways to go for all the different categories, so that's something to be really mindful of as we move forward with this project. Thank you so much. So shifting gears a little bit, talking about the different potential uses for the 60-acre site. There's a lot of good conversation that's already started, and the working group is kind of working with us on this, too. And these are, you see the, on the top bar, they're talking about the different possible uses. There's housing, then there's affordable housing in specific, office, retail, and community facilities. For housing, right now, the Frye's site has a zone of RM 30, which basically limits the dwelling units per acre to 30 units per acre, and a height of 35 feet. It's also, the areas on the side that could likely be redeveloped are definitely more occupied, they're occupied by commercial use right now. So there's an opportunity, being so close to transit, that there, we leverage the possibility of increasing the density and increasing heights, and there, these are conversations that are, that we are having right now. Affordable housing is, it's difficult to fund this, and though we do see that there has, there is a need, it's also not easy to kind of really make an affordable housing viable with these kinds of density and this height limit. Our economists have kind of advised us that you need to be at least at a 120 units per acre, which is a five-to-six-story to start with, to really make these feasible for 100% affordable housing. So it is important to kind of keep that in mind. And the council, in seven years, just approved 100% affordable housing projects, so it takes time for the city to kind of get these kind of projects in place. The city, of course, requires 15% of all units to be affordable in any kind of new development that housing, development that comes into play. For office, Palo Alto really has a strong office market. It's a very desirable place for office to locate itself, and the fact that there is a limit to how much premium office space can come online in a, in a year is limited to 50,000. It makes it even more, it makes it even more kind of difficult for office to kind of happen here. The site does currently have some larger tenants like Cloudera, but there are, and warehouses do house some small incubator kind of spaces, and medium businesses are also kind of located here. The one thing to do, to note is that the office rents at an eight to nine per square feet rent in, within the plan area on an average, as compared to housing, which is, and it is, which is about five to seven. So it makes it a little more attractive for developers to do office use, commercial use as compared to residential. For retail, the most important thing to note is that the Frye's Electronics is ending, it's coming up for its end of its lease in 2019, so that really poses an opportunity for the community to think about the use of that warehouse and of that site. We do know that, in general, the nature of retail is changing, and it's moving from big boxes to more experiential retails. It's not, we not seeing, our economists has, have told us that there isn't a chance that a big-box retail store might find this place attractive, but so how we think of the future of any kind of commercial retail in this place is kind of important for us to be creative. And people, to be made, to make any retail viable over here, it's important to have people living and working close by so that there is an catchment area for the retail to kind of really get more of its iris from. Community facilities, there is definitely a public safety building in the vicinity that's been, and that's coming online. Mata Dara Creek has been identified as a place that can really provide a new identity for this area, and improvements have been kind of mentioned in the comprehensive plan, and that's kind of, that's dear to the community. They have definitely pointed us to look at opportunities of how we can really leverage that as an asset for the rest of the development. And the community has given us clear clues of, to think creatively about the different kind of facilities that could be located here for a better quality of life. There is maker's space ideas, and there are more of an artist kind of vibe that's, that the community feels that should be enhanced and looked at as an opportunity for this area. We've, the three working groups that we've had have been about, firstly, we orient, the first one was on October 16th, and that was just a high-level kind of orientation to their roles that they would have at this process, and letting them know about the approach and the schedule. I just need a little bit of water, sorry. We were back in front of them on November 15th. We talked about existing conditions, and the community, the working group did a walking tour, a study tour on their own, and they came back with their findings and shared the assets and, sorry, assets and opportunities that they saw on the side. And we, as consultant team, brought forward some metrics in terms of neighborhoods that we think have a good life and have a good mix, and we shared that with them, and there was a good exchange in terms of what kind of things can be aspired to. Thank you so much. We came back to them on January 16th and did a visioning session. This was really helpful, because the working group members brought forward precedents of their favorite neighborhoods that they thought they could aspire to be, and that was kind of inspirational for us, too. And we had a, we had a good dialogue with them, and they took on a role of a persona, and they really walked us through the possibilities of what a tech, young tech individual might experience, how they might experience this, or what they might expect from the future of this neighborhood, or different kind of personas were played out. So that was definitely very helpful for the consultant team to kind of get their thoughts on. February 5th, we had a well-attended, open community workshop, and we shared pretty much the same findings that we just brought forward to you. It was kind of telling them where we were in terms of our findings from the analysis that the consultant team was doing. And what was interesting was, we did a, we did a live poll and got their input on a few items that I'll walk you through in the next few slides. And there was kind of focused discussion at the table to get their thoughts on specific items that, that are coming up in the next few slides. One of the questions that we asked them was, one, to identify whether they felt that the goals, that have, cities' goals for this neighborhood, as has been identified in the comprehensive plan, were something they agreed with, and you can see a vast majority agreed with that. The first two bars basically showed that they strongly agreed and somewhat agreed. I think, yeah, there was very few opposition in terms of not, being not in agreement with the, with those goals. The second question focused on understanding of the housing and the city's priority for the project area and the type of housing that they thought would be here. We'd kind of given them choice of different kinds, affordable housing, working, workforce housing, market rate housing, and then other. So the, basically, most of them called out "other" as a choice, primarily because they wanted a good mix. They didn't think that any one of them should be the primary kind of a housing type that we should push for in this area. The third question was focusing on the, their kind of sensibilities in terms of the heights that this area should be looking for. There is definitely a 35-story kind of, as per the zone, current zoning, that's the height limit, but there, it's a clear understanding that the housing is needed, and certainly it would, height would add to the right kind of densities that this place should be, should be trying to achieve. But at the same time, there was a very strong direction to say that the character and, and the identity of this place should be carefully crafted so that it, the experience on the street isn't one of feeling like being in a canyon. So they were, they were very thoughtful about that input. The fourth question was asking them about the different community amenities they kind of wish they would, the plan would kind of put forward as a suggestion. And you can see the tallest bar over there is to highlight the possibility of the Mata Dara Creek being leveraged as an asset, and what we could do to really make that as a strong identity for the community. And the second tallest bar that you see is that of improved bike facilities, so really trying to focus on just connection to the outdoors and to connection to the nature. The fifth question was asking them about, specifically about the neighborhood retail and services that they would imagine in this community in future, and, but obviously, they definitely want the neighborhood-serving retails and the restaurants and cafes to kind of really socialize and kind of mingle with the other community members. But also, you see, the D is the artist and maker's space, where they feel strongly that that's a way to kind of make this an authentic and a really unique neighborhood. The sixth question was again focusing a little bit more to get a sense on the type of open space that the planned area should have. And again, as expected, the linear park along the creek with its walking path was something that the community really wanted to focus, prioritize mostly. The seventh question was talking about the connectivity improvements on the site, and they did, they were pretty clear that the site needed better connectivity, more porosity, but there was more consensus on the fact that the connectivity should be prioritized for pedestrians and bikes, and not so much for vehicles and cars. So that's definitely a strong message that we've been hearing from the community. So just to sum it up for you, it's, the only kind of feedback has been to create a mix of housing that emphasizes inclusivity and affordability, exploring additional height and, so that it can offer affordable housing possibilities. Increase in housing such that, and it, but it should also plan for a better walking and bike connections and, and kind of less priority to car traffic, and building on the existing and inclusive neighborhood character, and emphasizing a high quality of design, and really trying to provide more of a creative neighborhood amenities for this area. And of course, looking for opportunities to enhance the creek area and the open side, open space alongside. Sorry, that was really quick, but I wanted to give you a quick overview. We do have an opportunity to come back to you again in August, and we'll have three more working group sessions by that time, and we'll have had another community meeting. And that will be to kind of really start evolving and developing and thinking about the right kind of options for this area. And when we come back, the hope is that we'll have a rich discussion with you and get a clear direction on the, towards the preferred plan that we'll want for this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll go to the public for questions and comments, I guess comments. Or do we have any cards? Good. I'm sorry? All right, we got, we got a bunch here, so that's good. First speaker is Don Barr. Don, are you out there? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Don Barr. Thanks very much. I'm appearing here with the knowledge and support of Ken Graham, who's the CEO of the Mayview Community Health Center. And as you may know, in the courthouse on, I think it's Grant, there is, if you look over in the right-hand corner, there is a very small Mayview Community Health Center facility, 5,000 square feet, has been there for a couple of decades or more, and it is the only federally certified low-income clinic in Palo Alto that provides care, medical care to all comers regardless of ability to pay. And they have several thousand patients assigned to them by Santa Clara County Health Plan, and they're not able to actually provide the care that they need, and so the, Mayview really needs a bigger space. And the optimal would be 25,000 square feet of a clinic space, as close to El Camino as possible, because many of the patients use public transportation. This would allow them to expand the provider network, to provide, in particular, for children, pediatrics. It would also allow the only Medi-Cal dental facility in Palo Alto, which would be tremendously important. It would also, though, enable them to expand behavioral health, social work, and other types of support. It only makes sense for something of about 25,000 square feet to say, what are we going to do above it? And Palo Alto Housing Corporation, Palo Alto Housing said, well, we would like to take the space from the second floor on up to build affordable housing for low-income or very low-income, and that is precisely consistent with the medical care. So I just encourage you to include in the Mayview plan, when it eventually is developed, a high priority for a community health center that would allow Mayview to expand and serve the patient population that it has been assigned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken Joy.
Good evening, council members. I want to thank the consultants, the staff, the working group, city staff for coming today. I live two blocks away, I want to welcome you all to my neighborhood. I know that it's slightly outside of the NVCAP area, but I want to thank those who've been looking to expanding the Boulevard Park, that will be certainly tied to this effort, and who endorse the proposal for the Mayfield Health that was just described. I'm glad to see there's some recognition for the Thomas Foon Chews Bayside Canyon. And I want to ask you, when you look at this Staff Report 9922 that you read with a discriminating eye, I think there are things in there that slightly misrepresent some things, so please be judicious. I think that there are some questions about methodology in some of the consultant and staff reports that raise questions about transparency. And I'd like to read you one statement here that's on page 48 of Attachment E, in the Perkins &amp; Will thing. It says, "The capacity of the planned area could be significantly increased with zoning modifications and/or site consolidation." Now, I've asked before whether staff or consultants are recommending that R1 housing on Pepper and Olive be rezoned. I think that statement in this staff report raises questions for me. I think it's extremely important that that be addressed as explicitly as possible. I also want to note that the community meeting, which took place last month while I was out of town, didn't seem to ask any questions to the attendees about office space in the study area, particularly in the Frye's site. In my opinion, we don't need any office space. But I am concerned about, I am concerned about what's referred to as existing legal-conforming office uses. That was brought up in the stakeholder meeting from the property owner, and to me, that raises more questions. I thank you for addressing all these.
Thank you. Next, Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth, and council members. The site has some opportunities and also some problems. As you probably are aware, the intersection of El Camino and Page Mill is the most congested in the city. And so anything that goes in there is going to make things worse. And as an example of how bad it can be, I drive down El Camino at 10 o'clock in the morning, and I get backed up all the way to Olive. Traffic is terrible. And we do need more housing. I don't know how you avoid it. You might be able to talk to Stanford about expanding the Marguerite, so we have more bus service in that area and along El Camino. service in that area and along El Camino and going into Ventura and Baron Park, among other places. But we need alternatives to the car. If you don't have any, they're going to drive. Second, the Frye's site, you heard earlier that it has a history. Let me give you a little bit of the history. The building is almost 100 years old. It was built in the early 1920s. And it was the site of what was then the first, let's call it manufacturing in Palo Alto. They processed all of the food from the Valley of Hearts Delight, packaged it, and shipped it out. It was a packing house. It was there for decades. There used to be a railroad track behind what is now the Frye's building. Right now, it's a parking lot, but the railroad track was there for decades. And that's how they got the produce shipped up to San Francisco. The Frye's building, which was built in the early 1920s, almost 100 years old, because it was the first, let's call it industrial building in Palo Alto, it has a historic importance. Now, there are some problems with that site. And one of them is, of course, that it's been rezoned for residential. And let me tell you a little story. About 30 years ago, I happened to be in an ARB meeting, and Randy Frye was there asking for permission to have a sign saying Frye's is here on El Camino and Portage. The city ordinances do not allow you to have signs about commercial properties off the commercial property site. But people were so eager to have Frye's there, the ARB allowed it. So after the ARB approved it, I talked to Randy Frye and I said, "You realize that that site has been rezoned for housing?" And at that time, it was going to be, the commercial was going to die in about eight years, eight to 10 years. And Randy said, "Hey, if we're still in business eight years from now, I'll be delighted." And that was 30 years ago. So we have a history with that building. And when you talk about redeveloping the site and tearing the building down and putting in something else there, it has historical importance and you should be very careful about how you handle it. So please be aware of the problems with developing that site and just don't go and mash, and mash it up.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Becky Sanders. I want to note that the issue that Bob brought up about the historical significance of the Frye's, of that building, you know, that was actually the subject of the memo that Ed mentioned earlier this evening. It's, you know, there's some data on this now that we didn't have before. Please proceed.
I pulled myself together. And so, by the way, these two microphones are for people to line up in droves to stand up. So I know that you, we have our names, our, to Beth. Now, everyone needs to give their name to you, Beth, correct, Ms. Minor? So do line up in droves, because I begged for two microphones. I made life really hard for a lot of people, because I just knew there'd be... Okay, so remind me never to go off script again, because I lost it and I was, I can't run for office now because Janati will just run that tape over and over of me losing it. So my career is over. All right. I want to second Bob's, Mr. Moss's comments about the history. There's a pile of us that are, you know, because of my whole gentrification thing and my guilt complex and everything that I'm working on for having ruined the neighborhood. I want to, yeah, I want to preserve the fact that that was a Chinese business, like possibly the first Chinese gazillionaire in California. And that is huge for Chinese history, for Chinese people in America. And we have a lot of Chinese people living in Ventura and I, you know, I just, I would think that would be a super McProud thing for them to have, so. And I'm proud of that too, because it, so anyway, and on that, so when you, after you, you know, have the museum and part of the old factory still there for viewing with the square asparagus bottles that Thomas Fung Chu invented, then let's have some connectivity all the way into South Ventura, so, into Ventura, into South Ventura, so that it's just this beautiful environment of people going back and forth. And I'm talking about cars and bikes and families. And I'm not talking about cars. No, did I say cars? No, I didn't. Okay, I take it back. So bikes and, you know, scooters and all those things that groovy people are using, and not the cars. So we really do need to discourage cars and keep them out on the periphery so that we have the adequate parking. But on that adequate parking, even though we know that cars are going away, at some point, we really hope that's true, they are not. So I think in the survey that the Venturans submitted and is in the packet, Venturans do believe that anything that, any, any use at all should be fully parked as much as possible. I mean, we can give, we can give, but let's be realistic about the needs of people and families. I love the idea, a lot of us have been talking about this medical facility there and the fact that it would welcome families and be warm. So if that is, could be possible to have the Palo Alto Housing people build, and if that were on, like say, El Camino, if somehow that could be made to happen, well, let's make sure that's integrated into the rest, so it's like seamless, so that that's not the section where like, well, the poor people go, because, oh, is it, am I timed? Am I timed?
You're getting there, yeah.
Holy moly, okay. So then things for youth. They took away our bowling alley, they took away the downtown house hangout that the kids used to be able to have in high school. And there really isn't that much for youth. And so this Frye's site should be family-oriented. So we really want to have, like, just stick a bowling alley in the basement, guys, and that would be really cool. And then also, let's make sure that somehow, as we do the NVCAP, that we are somehow addressing the people that are living in their cars. That is a huge problem or an opportunity in Ventura, and I just can't imagine it's going to get any better. So we really need to find out, what are we going to do with the people that live in their houses, in their cars? And then, yeah, I think that's, there's so much more I want to say, I guess we can write about it. But where are the hordes of people? Are there more people coming to speak? So thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Cedric, to be followed by Kelsey Baines. Cedric, are you here? There you are.
Good evening, city council, working group, and citizens. Thank you for hosting this space and the community that's being affected. I appreciate that. I would like to invite us all to envision the multifaceted benefits that come from systemic, holistic designs which take care of people and planet. So here's my vision. I would hope that we would restore Matadoro Creek on the edge of Frye's to a park and flood control basin, removing the concrete channel in that stretch so our native frogs can breed again. Rooftop gardens on all new buildings to cool the area, create habitat and open, and create open space for building occupants. Green stormwater infrastructure throughout the new development to capture and clean urban runoff. Native plants pesticide-free. Green buildings, carbon-negative buildings in sight. A large central car-free core, where cars come in only as deep as they need to access underbuilding parking. The existing roads can be kept for emergency access, maybe a bus service, but otherwise not be accessible by cars to create a safe and healthy car-free space where children can roam free off-leash.
Not my kids, damn it.
Public square surrounded by a few cafes, restaurants, and bars, but crucially including ample public space where people of all ages and incomes can gather in community. Cities in Europe have such spaces and they are an important ingredient to healthy life. A community center serving homeless seniors, children, and daycare. Community medical services. Publicly available showers, laundry facilities, and restrooms available 24/7. Studies have shown that when seniors interact with children, symptoms of Alzheimer's go away. So in getting that multi-age aspect of things would be really helpful for everybody. Mixed-use development with retail at ground level, office and services above that, and residential above that, and on the outsides facing the, towards residential areas. A wide variety of housing types and affordabilities, including very low or no income levels. If height limits are relaxed to enable more housing, as was said, to require step backs of the buildings every one or two stories, begin with rooftop gardens at each step back to avoid imposing urban canyons. Minimize office space, maximize housing. Any office space that is added should support small and locally-owned businesses and services. Structures of local community ownership or share of increased, let's see, structures of local community ownership of businesses and services. So there are structures that allow cooperations between, like a neighborhood community group and then structures of locally-owned cooperatives. And then improved bicycle and pedestrian connections and human-scale design. So that's the end of my diatribe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kelsey Baines.
I fully agree with the last commenter. So my name is Kelsey Baines. I apologize if my comments are a little bit scattered. I did not anticipate being able to speak so quickly. So I'm really excited about this opportunity to invite new neighbors to Palo Alto and to provide safe housing for unhoused and underhoused neighbors. And I really hope that the city is forward-thinking and it's planning here and has a bold vision for this space that prioritizes human beings over cars and really maximizes open spaces by utilizing density and increasing heights. I think five-story buildings are very attractive and wish that we would consider more of them in Palo Alto. So I'm going to speak just about my own personal experience in terms of the need for housing in Palo Alto. I think many of the council members already know what I do for a living, but I'm an early career psychologist. I serve homeless veterans at the VA. I'm not here representing the VA. And I think Palo Alto has come to a place where affordable housing, just, there's a broad consensus that we need it. And so I want to talk a little bit about, as someone who is above the area median income but still cannot afford to live here, that there's also a need for not BMR housing. So I think we desperately need the BMR housing, and I'm glad that everyone is on board for that. But just as a federal employee, I'm a GS-13 federal employee, and things at the VA right now feel very bleak. Another one of my coworkers told me today that she's leaving. And it's just like this hollowing out of the middle class, and as the baby boomers are retiring, I don't, I don't know how millennials are going to be able to live here if we're not thinking about creating spaces for us. And so I think this is a great opportunity to create housing for people who don't or would prefer to not drive two hours to work every day. As I try to map out my future and think about where I'm going to be able to live, it's not feasible for me to live anywhere that, if I'm going to have a family, anywhere that isn't at least an hour and a half drive away. And that's not the kind of lifestyle I want to have. It's more important to me to be able to spend time with my family than it is to have a single-family home. So just as you're kind of thinking about the housing type mix, I hope you'll be thinking about spaces for young families to raise kids and not have to depend on cars to do that. So my final comments are just about thinking about transportation. So I hope that we can do the Loma Verde bike path and think really critically about bike and pedestrian infrastructure for this space. Thanks.
Thank you. Be followed by Linnea Wickstrom.
Good evening, and I want to commend this process. One of the things, I was able to attend the last working group meeting and was able to hear the staff emphasize that this working group and this process are modeled on the SOFA plan and the process that was used there. And there are certain similarities, but I wanted to emphasize a couple of very important distinctions. In that process, the working group was empowered to actually develop the plan, including the policies and the vision. What's been described as the purview of this working group is to advise and have input to the staff and the consultants. And that's a very reversed role. And out of that, we had a, really, an excellent outcome, far exceeding in the SOFA area what staff or anyone else expected was going to be able to happen. We had 100% family affordable housing project that's beautiful, we had a daycare center, we had historic preservation, and we actually had a two-acre park that came out of that process that at the beginning, we basically had the city staff and the city manager at the time insisted that that was off the table, couldn't even be considered. Fortunately, we had the backside, our backsides covered by, at that time, former mayor Gary Fazino and Joe Huber, who really insisted that we trust the working group and empower it to work hard toward consensus. It had both the residents, advocates of different interests, and the landowners and development community all together, and they all worked hard to achieve consensus. And the outcome was really great and exceeded the expectations. So the council can still have the opportunity to come back and modify the purview of the working group and calibrate it so that it really is equivalent to what we had in the SOFA plan. To a great extent, it's a question of trust that a diverse group of stakeholders can work together and come up with consensus solutions that really benefit the landowners, the city as a whole, and the community as a whole, and the neighborhood. So I encourage the council to look at that purview and make those adjustments as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Linnea.
Good evening. I'm an Area 4 resident, Monroe Park. I'm a member of a group of Palo Alto parents who have adult children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We hope that the example set at Wilton Court will inform the planning for housing and community amenities in the Ventura development. That is, we hope the planning will include housing for extremely low-income residents with some level of preference for IDDD people. The Ventura neighborhood is an excellent place for housing for people who do not own cars or drive and who will walk or bike or use transit instead. The prospect of a mixed-use area with community amenities and working with the themes from the community groups is excellent for the inclusive housing and life, so critical for this group. Despite the difficulty of keeping Frye's on the site and the difficulties of retail, I just have to mention my husband's joke, because I do think that mixing third spaces and some retail would go well, and my husband wants to know if we can have Frye's with that.
Karen Holman. Former mayor Karen Holman. Like Pat Bird.
Well, I said I wouldn't come unless it was important. It wouldn't bother you with my presence in a lot, a lot of occasions, but this is very important. The Ventura neighborhood is a really important part of this community, and I hope this process really respects the neighborhood in that fashion. I won't reiterate things that former mayor Pat Bird said, but he and I, we weren't given caps, but we both have our SOFA cap, caps on tonight. So given that, so some of the accomplishments of the SOFA plan were affordable housing, childcare, retail and services preservation, historic preservation, housing densification, new, a new park, I'm repeating a little bit, auto services preservation, just like there are in this area, individual office size limitations, design standards for new and remodeled projects. One of the things that really helped us develop the plan, as Pat described it, was the existing conditions information that was provided. I reviewed the materials that are online, and I've attended two of, and part of a third of the working group meetings, and there are some gaps. There's a lot of really good information, hats off to, to the consultants, but there's some real gaps too. There's not an indication of, but what we had was, we had maps that showed block by block what the land use was and what the development was there. And that hasn't happened here, so it's really hard to know what we're building on, no pun intended, but it was hard to know what we're building upon if we don't know what exists there now. How do we make it compatible if we don't know what's there now? I did a walkabout probably three months ago, something like that, of the Ventura area. And it's really interesting because, I mean, y'all know that I'm... hasn't happened here. So it's really hard to know what we're building on, no pun intended. It was hard to know what we're building upon if we don't know what exists there now. How do we make it compatible if we don't know what's there now? I did a walkabout probably three months ago, something like that, of the Ventura area. And it's really interesting because, I mean, y'all know that I'm favorable to historic preservation, but it's really interesting because when you walk around there and you step back from the fries building, it's a beautiful building. It really is. Marin County, you can go to town after town after town, and they have honored their industrial buildings and made neighborhoods and, and shopping areas out of them. When you walk around a little more, you kind of go, hmm, there's a loading dock on the back. And I think Bob Moss mentioned that what's concreted over right now was a railroad spur where the goods were shipped from there. Could that be a pedestrian and bicycle path? Don't know. But you have to know that it's there to know if you're going to build on it or not. When you walk around a little bit more, you discover that, or I did, and it's been borne out to be true, actually, in some study at the archives, is that on a couple of the streets, residential streets, the houses and the lots are of similar size and orientation. And I started thinking like, gee, well, is this worker housing that supported the cannery? Indeed, it was. And the cannery, by the way, is, if memory serves correctly, it's like the third-largest cannery in the United States, only behind Del Monte and Libby. It's a huge, big deal. And there's more, but I just, lastly, I will just say, let's not think about constraints. Let's think about what's there. How can we enhance it? How can we grow what's there to really build and enhance community and a really creative, wonderful outcome just as SOFA? Thanks.
Thank you. Todd Collins. Followed by David Adams.
Thank you. Hi, thanks. I'm Todd Collins. I'm a school board trustee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the district here, though I am going to talk about schools. Thank you all for coming to our neighborhood. I live at Bearin Park, right across the street over here, and frequently come just about every week to this, to this center. I have two things I wanted to talk about. The first is, I think it's important to recognize as you go through this process, this community is underserved in terms of community amenities, period. I think it, I would say it's grossly underserved. And I don't, I think if we miss the opportunity to address that in a important and thoughtful way with this project, that that opportunity will be missed forever. So I think it's really important. I have to say, I was a little bit underwhelmed by the community amenity section of the presentation that we got from the consultant and the scope of the ideas. I think it's insufficient for what the community needs. And I think there should be much more effort put into thinking about what the community can, can and should have. On that score, I think we've missed the most, what I think is the most important, or one of the most important, community amenities in our thinking about this, which is a school. If we're going to build a large amount of housing, which I think is a likely thing, houses, if you have a larger amount of housing, you should have a school. The school that, the attendance area for where the fries site is today is Bearin Park School. Bearin Park is over a mile from that site, and not a single kid will walk, not a single kid, because you have to, will not only walk a mile plus, you have to cross El Camino at State Highway. So that's a terrible, that is not a safe route to school, no matter how you cut it, all those kids will be driven. And in fact, even this site is not a very good site if we're going to build down there. A, it's not been a school site since 1976. It's a dump. And, I mean, look at it. I have to say, I was a little, I was a little underwhelmed by the, the statement about what we're going to do to upgrade this place, because it's, it needs a lot, it needs a lot of upgrading. I don't, I don't think the schools will want to rebuild a, will want to upgrade the site, even if we were to buy it back. I think we would, we would probably scrape it and rebuild and build from scratch. But I think a far better idea would be to figure out a way to put a site over where the new housing would be, and trade this site, or trade some other site, or buy a site, or designate a site where you could build a school over by where the housing is. And I think there's been a lack of coordination with the school district. I talked to our executives today, and while there'd been one phone call, I think with the consultant about whether there might, whether a school might go over in the other place, there'd been no thoughtful discussions and no, and no basis, as far as I can tell, for thoughtful discussions. So I think that'd be a huge missed opportunity, because I think the most important community identity from define, community amenity in terms of defining a community's identity and making everyone feel like they belong is a school. And this area has no school, hasn't had a school for over 40 years, will never have a school unless we take steps now to build one for them. And so I think that's a very important thing to come out of this planning process. Thank you.
Thank you. David Adams. Followed by Kostmarski.
Honorable members of the council, thank you for coming to Ventura this evening. It's good that we're doing a coordinated plan for this area, so we can take a holistic approach to the, to the area. It's kind of the opposite of what's normally done in Palo Alto, which is a very piecemeal approach. However, you know, the, the area is very dynamic, and I have to question whether the, the plan is actually really being coordinated. For example, I read in the packet, statements such as data-driven approach, review and respond to baseline data. The initial step is data gathering. We are currently concluding the initial data gathering stage and have begun the development of plan options. However, if you look in the packet, there's, there's no mention of the developments that are coming, that are not online yet on Park Boulevard, but are coming on stream very soon. That's 3045-2747-2555. All of these are within the plan area or just, you know, a short walk outside of it. Also within the plan area is the Groupon building, which is about to be taken over by WeWork. Rumor has it that there's going to be over 700 employees in that building. Well, if you walk around that site, there's 124 surface parking lots. There's a few more underground, which I couldn't count because it's locked. But there's, there's no mention of the WeWork in the, the packet apart from a label on the map. So the other thing that needs to be considered as well is this, the cloud, the ground store of the Cloud Era building is currently vacant. So I feel that, that the analysis and the data gathering is incomplete. There should be some, you know, estimates and scenarios for, for, you know, all these offices that are either underutilized or about to come on stream. And in that, I'm particularly talking about the effects of parking and traffic. On another point, transit-oriented housing gets bounded around a lot. Well, we've lived on Olive for over 20 years, and we never use public transport. It is just, you know, too slow or inconvenient. And I don't know anyone else on, on our road who use public transport either. So, you know, why not do a survey of people who, in the area, who currently, you know, live in transit-oriented housing and see how they live, how they go about their lives. And lastly, final thing, no more offices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Valdek Kostmarski, followed by Winter Dellenbeck.
Hi. So I have to admit that in the beginning of this process, when I heard about this project, I didn't treat this as opportunity, which I'm sorry that I didn't. I feel about this much more that way now. I felt that this is basically using a poor neighborhood to resolve some issues that was created over years by underdevelopment in the city. And I think a lot of people in my neighborhood kind of started that way with this process. Actually, I liked the process a lot. There are imperfections and, you know, rightfully, you know, certain things could be addressed differently. But what it did, it made us talk about things and, you know, basically built our neighborhood even stronger. Now, I think that we would feel much easier about this whole process if we would see that we are part of larger picture. Because the way this thing was introduced to us was like, okay, here is a lot, you know, kind of poor neighborhood, and we need a lot of new development in Palo Alto. So it's a great opportunity. Let's build it there. And that's why we all like, wait a minute, you know, it's our houses, our backyards, you know, our traffic. If we will see that, that the effort is spread evenly, that there is a vision that basically lets you achieve those targets in more uniform way throughout the city, and you can show this to us, I think that there will be much more support to the effort, because we definitely are willing to pay our share. You can see that people are, you know, they, they understand that this is a special location. There is, you know, the high-traffic streets around. There is a train station. It makes sense to make this more dense neighborhood. But we don't want to be the answer for all the issues that Palo Alto created over years. We want to be part of it. So that was my one point. And the second point is, you know, keeps coming to you, but I think that it's worth it that it does, that, I don't know how it happened, but we are walking and bicycle-riding neighborhood. People really appreciate that. We still do have cars. So there is a little bit of a tension there. And I think that solution that we are looking for, it's something that would, could allow both to coexist. Bringing the cars in when they are needed, but in organized way, and then reinforce what is naturally there already, which is pedestrian and bike-oriented neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. To be followed by...
I live in Bearin Park, but I often cross the street to Ventura. Thank you, thank you. I want to, first of all, associate myself with, thank you, I want to associate myself with Don Barr and Becky Sanders' comments about the medical dental clinic. We should make, I would hope that there would be space made for that. That whatever development, redevelopment happens, of course, which is, I think, what this process in part is all about, should be very supportive and compatible with the current neighborhood in Ventura, with both the residents and the culture of the neighborhood, the makeup of this very, very special neighborhood, which I used to live in. So, and respectful of the small mom-and-pop retail, which should never be denigrated. This neighborhood and Bearin Park actually has walkable neighborhood to a lot of extremely good, small mom-and-pop, rich variety of really good neighborhood retail services. And it may not, it may look a little different from glitzy downtown Palo Alto retail, but these are really good services. They've been around for a long time. They deserve respect. Also, I want to associate myself with Cedric about stormwater runoff. I don't know if it's a requirement in the city right now, but this whole project should be mitigated, every bit of stormwater runoff. It should be a fundamental part and designed into the entire space. There should be a really good meeting space. I look at this meeting space, and I'm really happy that the city's thinking about putting money into it and continuing. But I'm really thinking of a meeting space, it's a, that's a modern meeting space, it's flexible, could be divided up, could be a place where the entire neighborhood redeveloped and, and, and traditional neighborhood could come together in a space. It could have cultural celebrations, diversity exhibits, could have meetings, large, small, celebrations, all kinds of activities that the, the whole, the whole neighborhood could come together in, in a, in a really useful, modern, updated space. I'm not sure that it's here. But that should be a part of this plan, because that is what fosters community and neighborliness and a neighborhood, and that's what Ventura deserves. And also, I have to go off-script a little bit, because I keep dawg on it hearing that Wilton was the last BMR housing built. Well, yes, we built, we're going to build it. And I'm really glad, because I love BMR housing and I supported Wilton, and I'm so proud of the Ventura neighbors and Palo Alto housing and everybody that helped and approved of it. Good. However, buena vista. And I don't just say that because I was involved with buena vista. I say that on behalf of, and I'm going to take another second, because of the city, the whole city was involved with buena vista, approving it and everything else. That has about twice as many units, twice as many units as Wilton, and it has about four times as many residents as Wilton. I think it's worth remembering that. That was only two years ago that that was approved. And so I think we should stop saying only that Wilton was the last project, that that is affordable housing that is deed-restricted, just like Wilton is, and we shouldn't forget it. And hopefully, the same thing will happen at the President Hotel.
Thank you. David, David Barron, followed by Samuel Jackson.
Good evening. I'm David Barron. I'm, I live near downtown, so I'm, I'm an outsider to this neighborhood. But I also want to say that, you know, I, I want my neighborhood to be denser, too. I don't want to push density on other people's neighborhoods without having it myself. And I, I want this density because of the housing shortages that this whole region is in. I'm happy to hear that the plans are moving in the direction of dense mixed-use. Some of the photos from the staff report and the images in the staff report were great to see. It was also interesting to see a bunch of images in the staff report of things that people see as places they'd like to emulate, when I think the bulk of those images are of things that are illegal to build anywhere in Palo Alto. And I would like to have things like that, but getting, getting our zoning to be able to build things like that is more than just the height limit. It's, it's floor area ratios, it's parking requirements, it's all of these things that make it hard to build housing here. Parking requirements are a great example. I was looking at a, a develop, proposal, a proposed development that's going to be heard before the PTC on Wednesday. And it has yet another huge penthouse on the top floor. And it has yet another huge penthouse on the top floor, because if they use this 2,400-square-foot top floor for anything other than a huge penthouse, they'd have to put in more parking than they'd be able to fit into the basement. So as you look at building density of housing, look at all the things that make it hard to build housing here, and try and figure out which ones can be fixed in a way that is appropriate for this neighborhood. In addition to that, it's, you know, this is a neighborhood that's close to transit. It's great to see more bike and pedestrian infrastructure in this neighborhood as well. Thanks.
Samuel Jackson, followed by Nikki Narom.
Hi. My name is Samuel Jackson. I live just outside the cap area on Grand Ave, and I work just within it, actually, within the cannery. So I moved here a few years ago, and one of the big contrasts of my time here has been to see the privilege, the opportunity, the resources matched by the lack of will to do things to the problems that we see every day. And I think the meeting tonight, the community has sought to optimize many different things. Some people have talked about housing, some cafes, some parks, some hospitals, and climate diversity. All these things are very good virtues. But I think ultimately, we don't, we don't need to choose. We shouldn't need to choose. And I think there's two things that I hope the council considers strongly when trying to balance through policy and direction, what can be done. I think that's number one, increase density. And number two, further push for more modal shifts. That comes through both what the prior speaker mentioned about reducing parking requirements, as well as additional incentives and infrastructure to help support everything from bikes, scooters, pods, dog sleds, whatever it takes, that we can move away from these investments in car and vehicle infrastructure. And for myself, I know that experience just walking to and from the Ventura cap area specifically, where I'm either accosted by one of my coworkers who almost hits me with a vehicle, someone going to or from work who almost hits me with a vehicle, so forth and so on. I walk. I'm glad that I can walk. I don't want to have a car. I'd love to not have a car. Please make it more expensive for me and others to have cars insofar as we can provide alternatives. And I think the last point, just to emphasize again, that we don't have to make these choices. If 30% of this current area is occupied by parking, and that's, that's probably limited, depending upon how we think about it, that's a lot of space that we could devote towards other purposes. If we reduce the amount of land and land use purposes for cars, we can put in more parks, we can put in more schools, more hospitals. we can put in more schools, more hospitals. There's a lot of opportunity there, as long as we can think about both going up and reducing the amount of space horizontally used for vehicles. So I would strongly urge that, and look forward to seeing the results from all this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Narang, to be followed by Elaine Johnson.
Thank you for the time this evening. I've been in Ventura on Fernando Avenue for eight years, so relatively new earth to the neighborhood. When we first moved in, we felt extremely welcomed by our neighbors who are here today. And then we had children, and we felt like we won the lottery to live in this neighborhood. But as we're moving forward with this plan, I just really want to emphasize the idea of keeping the whole neighborhood involved in this and not just focusing on the boundaries of this north Ventura coordinated area effort. You know, lived in this area for eight years, and I'm sure you probably have the data on this, I don't, but I would estimate my sidewalk going from my house to California Avenue has been open continuously for maybe six months to a year. It's, it's what it feels like. There's probably data to prove me wrong, but I'd love to see that. And, you know, we talk about walkability and not needing a car. I don't feel comfortable walking with my kids to California Avenue. I take a car. I live three-quarters of a mile away. It's, it's, it's sad. And going beyond that, as we are looking at this development, you know, we'd love to not, at least me personally, would love to not see the fastest route to get from El Camino to Oregon be through our neighborhood. I mean, I think no one would argue if you're, if I was driving from northbound on El Camino, I would cut through my neighborhood to get to Oregon, it's just so much faster. So I think that's just something we need to keep in mind as we do this whole project. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker will be Elaine Johnson.
Thank you for coming, everybody. I'm a homeowner on Chestnut, so one block south of Lambert. I would just like to echo what the previous speaker said, that cars are, are really an issue. If we're, if we're talking about having room for less parking, people are still gonna drive and they're gonna park on our street. And so we need to address that and be realistic about it. Maybe we need to have parking permits, I don't know, but we have to think about it. And then I just had a question about the toxic plume that's in the area. What's happening with that, and will it be addressed while all this work is going on? Thank you.
Staff, did you say anything off the cuff on the toxic plume, since that was our last Or should we, should we get back on that?
Thank, thank you. So the plume actually is under study. We do have an environmental consultant onboard along with engineers to study, to study the potential impacts of the plume and what needs to be mitigated on-site. We're also gonna be reaching out to the state water board to also coordinate with them on how we need to treat the plume as well. So it will, we are starting environmental analysis, and that information will be released.
Thank you. So at this point, I think what we should do is go back to the working group for comments. So any commentary or questions from the group? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, yeah. I'm Angela Della Porta, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we did circulate a survey throughout the neighborhood in the last couple of months, and we had a good response from people, most of which reflects the, the comments that have been made today, both by the consultants and by the speakers today. And I'm just gonna quickly summarize, if that's a very, if that's okay, just very quickly. So first of all, yes, a lot of people in the neighborhood, most people in the neighborhood who responded to the survey, said that they do want to see more housing that is affordable for local teachers, nurses, and middle-income families. They also want to see some of the housing in this development go to low-income families. They want to see a reduction in car traffic, and I'm just giving you a summary of what most people said. And they want to see a lot of green space accessible and welcoming to the public. They want to see the creek renaturalized. What has, yeah, in addition, people want to see ample parking because we know that that can cause problems if there's not enough parking. We want to see, we, I'm saying the, the neighbors in our neighborhood. A very strong green building standards. They want to see no offices, no new offices, as has been mentioned several times. And most of the people who responded said that they do not want to see their neighbors forced to move if they don't want to move. So that's just about all, yeah, a good summary, but if anyone wants to see the whole survey, they're welcome to go to the Ventura and Neighborhood website and look there. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, comments and questions? Tom.
I have a few questions and then some comments. So I saw in the consultant report, the analysis of the land uses and office rates are pretty lucrative. I wonder if the consultant or staff knows, has there been any analysis of how many employees there are, particularly in the new buildings on Park Boulevard? I wonder if we have any, like, up-to-date estimates of, like, employees per square foot for new offices?
No, council member, we don't have employment data for those offices.
Okay. I mean, maybe it's something could be looked into. I also, probably more of a legal question, but I'm wondering about how specific plans will interact with some of these newer state laws and with state density bonuses. Like, does, does having a specific plan mean that it will need to be followed, given what we're hearing about, like SB 50 and some of the recent laws we've seen?
So I can speak from the, from our angle on this. We are, of course, monitoring state laws, and what we're doing here will be done with an eye toward what might be achievable under state law should SB 50 and some of these other laws pass. So it's, it's a bit of a balancing act for us right now.
There's no, I haven't heard anybody talking about, like, carve-outs for specific plans.
I've not, I've not heard of that kind of provision being incorporated into state law. My, my guess is that, and again, we'll have to see what the final bill, if it passes, what it says. My, I would believe that this area would be potentially, again, it's hard, I don't want to speculate too much because I don't know what the final language is going to be, and we're a little early in the process, but I would anticipate that for areas of the, any state laws that would be applicable to Palo Alto and certain properties in Palo Alto, this would not be excluded from that just by virtue of a coordinated area plan.
And then, is, is the working group and, I think, our staff looking at, at kind of what's allowed under existing zoning? And will that be the baseline for the EIR?
Well, so the baseline for the EIR will be the existing conditions. And so we would look at the size and intensity of land uses, the circulation patterns, parking, traffic, all that would be embedded as the baseline for any analysis that we, we study under the different scenarios. So the baseline is the existing conditions.
Existing conditions, but I guess with a projection on, like, how the current zoning...
So our, our baseline is the existing conditions of, of what's developed now.
Okay. I mean, I do think a useful scenario would be kind of leaving the zoning as-is, if that's...
You know, I, I'll make a note of that, and we can explore that when we contemplate our different scenarios. I mean, there is a no-project alternative that we will study, and, you know, I can anticipate that that would probably capture some of the interests that you have in that question.
And then the stakeholder meetings, are those public meetings?
The, sorry, I just don't want to lose your last comment there. The, we, we did conduct stakeholder meetings, and we did invite specific groups of people. They were not open to the public, they were not subject to the Brown Act. And again, it was an effort for us to meet with people who have an interest. I mean, a lot of people obviously have an interest in, in this area, and it was not intended to be exclusive, but we also know from experience that some people maybe aren't as willing to speak in a forum that has many people as opposed to a more candid conversation with consultants and staff. And so we, we did report out, and I think it's a part of this packet, included in this packet are the notes from that stakeholder discussion.
Okay. That's good to understand. And then getting a little more specific, thinking about the connected grid, has there been any discussion of making ASH connect, kind of in both directions, potentially like an underpass under Page Mill, and then also the other way over to, I think, Portage?
So that's a, that's a level of design analysis that we are not, we've not studied that at this point?
Okay. So just continuing kind of with that thought, I think there were a lot of comments about cut-through traffic and other ways to get to Page Mill. And it just struck me that if we did put an underpass at ASH that did not connect to Page Mill, it would potentially connect this neighborhood to Cal Ave and eliminate cut-through traffic. And then further, that ASH also gets interrupted by the Frye's Building, and it's part of a specific plan, you could maybe plan for it to extend through. I think we also need to think about bike access to Midtown and whether there's an underpass under the rail, some, some location. I agree with some of the speakers that said this community is underserved, and, you know, looking at the National Citizen Survey, that kind of jumps out, I think, in a lot of questions where you see big differences kind of by zone. The toxic plume came up at the end, and there was some comment in there that because of the toxic plume, we couldn't consider a school, but I would hope that we would use the same standards for housing that we would use for schools. Quickly on utilities, again, as part of a specific plan, I hope we'll consider this an underground district. And there was a little bit of discussion about recycled water, I mean, we are looking, expanding that, so hopefully that'll be given some thought. So kind of onto the bigger issues. So I would really like to see us consider perhaps a higher inclusionary percentage of affordable housing as part of this development. This is a huge chunk of our housing plan, I think it was 360 units, and we're really failing our arena targets at all levels except the highest level. And so I think it's time for us, on council, to really shift to these lower levels, and I think we really need to think about this large amount of housing, how much affordable housing we can support here. And then I'd really like to see some creative ideas on targeted housing. And, you know, the, there's been some papers recently that, that have been online about how the housing market is not one market, and new construction tends to be luxury housing or it tends to go to the highest bidder. And if we really want to support what we're calling middle income, I think Kelsey Barnes spoke about the need for federal workers, the VA hospital, we have teachers, we have city workers. It would be great to hear some ideas as part of this plan that would actually dedicate housing to specific groups. And that's not necessarily based on AMI, they may be above the below-market-rate income levels, but if it's pure-market-rate housing, you know, we have, we have more than enough demand with kind of high-income workers that it gets very difficult. So I'd love to hear some ideas on that. Gentrification is a huge concern of mine. I had proposed that Ventura be a priority for the city this year because I think getting the balance right is gonna be really critical in this project. And it's not just this area plan, it's the park, it's this building which supports a large amount of childcare for Palo Alto. And if we end up gentrifying the whole neighborhood and forcing people out, I think we'll have failed in this plan. And so I'd love to hear some ideas about protections against displacement as part of the plan as well. So we need, we need the childcare here. We heard from Todd Collins about a potential need for a school. I do think we should think of a school somewhere else other than, than this location. Short one, small one, I think we should consider carefully the use of private dining rooms and cafeterias versus supporting our local restaurants. That may be a policy we want to consider. And then I'm seeing a huge need for small office space. We continue to lose small medical psychiatrists, psychologists, just dedicated small office space. We're losing buildings on Cambridge, we're losing some on Hamilton. And so again, some policies around office size limits with the idea that we don't necessarily want large contiguous offices that could be occupied by a single large company. You know, thinking about parks and canopy, I would really urge the consultants and staff to remove the Stanford playing fields. It's not really park space. It's six acres of the 7.7 acres, and it's, it's primarily used by groups and private clubs. The use is limited, it's not dedicated parkland, it's astroturf, and the city has temporary lease on it. So I think if you think about that, we, we only have 1.8 acres, you know, for this neighborhood, and it's, you know, I don't think we should be counting the, the playing fields. And then my, my final point, and I think my biggest point, is I really think we need to strengthen the economic analysis. So there's a lot of discussion in the report about some of our current ordinances that we have in place to have a nice community. So things like height limits, ground-floor retail, office cap, and, you know, they're referred to as a burden in the report. And, you know, I'd like to see some acknowledgement of why we have those things. But most importantly, I think we really need to make it explicit that this specific plan provides economic benefits, potentially some really large benefits to property owners in the forms of exemptions from the current zoning, in exchange for some community benefits. And I think we really need to see the economic analysis before the council endorses this plan of kind of what's the value of what's being provided in the specific plan, and what are the community services that are, that are being paid for? And it's kind of implied, but it's not really explicit. And so I'd really like to see this kind of just clear, clear comparison of the current zoning to any proposed changes that come to us. And I'd really like to see the objectives updated, you know, there's a thing that refers to economic feasibility, but it, it really should be about economic value. So I actually have a motion, but I'd, I'd like, if you could come back to me, I'd love to hear the other council members first, maybe we could do a round or...
Not sure we're doing, not sure we're doing motions tonight.
I mean, it's an action item, and it says we can provide direction to the consultants.
I'm looking at the city attorney here.
The item is agendized as an action item.
Okay.
Thank you. City Attorney Molly Stumpf. It is agendized as an action item. I think what the, the staff is particularly looking for is kind of overall direction, endorsement of the work that's being done, continue, we'll hear from you soon, or are there adjustments, or if there are major course corrections. I think the idea is that those topics maybe can be introduced tonight, but it would be best to then schedule a dedicated follow-on meeting so that we can flush those out and, and provide technical support to, to spin that out into a specific item. Do you have anything further?
All right, thank you. So you want to make a motion now, or you want to...
If you could come back to me when it's motion time.
I'll come back to you. Allison.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. I think the thing that's been most interesting about this project so far, which I've, you know, been hearing about for a while and talking with many people in this room about, is the really rich history of the site and this area. I can say that... I can say that, I speak for myself, but I'm sure all of us, most of us have learned something in this process about the history of Palo Alto. So I thank you for that. A couple of just little questions and some of this actually gets to a point I'm going to make about the level of detail that we have so far. One is how much of this area is surface parking lots? I could see that there was a lot. There's been a reference to a third. Do we know exactly what percentage of this area is parking lots, surface parking lots?
It's 20-plus acres, so that's about one-third of the site area.
Okay, so like 33%? Okay. The reason I'm asking is one of the very helpful things that another consultant did for us on the Coverley Master Plan, you can look at what Concordia did, is they have a piece of paper and it's color-coded and the size of the rectangle is the amount of that space. It's a very easy visual way to understand what exactly are the existing conditions, you know, that were referenced earlier. Similarly, like, I understand that commercial entities own the homes on Olive Avenue. I could see there was yellow, but, you know, understanding at the more granular level that Mayor, former Mayor Holman mentioned, I think would be extraordinarily helpful. I also, you know, toured myself around a bit trying to get a sense of, you know, the different streets and I think the variety is a little bit difficult to comprehend with just the overhead view, so I'll just add that. The main thing I want to issue tonight is a challenge, frankly. If I think about what we did, I'll just use the Mitchell Park Library as an example. I know everyone's going to get tired of hearing this, but the example I want to use is the oak tree there. So there was a scenario under which we, there was, it was contemplated and we would have had more space for the library, which we might or might not need, eliminating the oak tree. And in the end, it was a challenge from the ARB as a constraint to the architect. And they used a great quote about how constraints breed creativity. So I'm going to list a few things that I really want to see in this. And for once, I don't want to be the practical, sensible, like, what makes the most sense if we, like, you know, average everything out. And the second thing I'm going to get to is I would really like us to see options. So under the current plan, all the options come to the stakeholder group. Thank you all. Thank you for doing the hard work for us as we prepare for this. But I personally would like to see a range of options come to council. This is very important and that would be a suggestion I would make for modification. So for example, what if we keep all the single-family housing on Olive? What if we consider the variety of housing options that some people have talked about, more communal options, right? What if we really address the needs of families? I heard that discussed tonight. Often when we talk about housing, it's, you know, how small can it get and it's for individuals. So for families, I'd like to see a little bit more variety there. Naturalizing the creek. We get one shot at this, right? So I get it might be hard. I get it might take a lot of space, but I want to see at least one option that shows us what naturalizing the creek would look like, right, for a whole variety of reasons. Urban canopy target area, which I will translate as plant more trees. Yes, please. You know, again, we're only going to get one shot at that. So those are things that I would like to see us build in a few constraints. That's a partial list on my behalf. I'm sure other people have things to add to it. And then we can get to, you know, I think people have had a lot of creative ideas about the other sorts of uses that the community might want to see here. A few people have mentioned, I haven't been to the, I think it's called the Barlow in Sebastopol, but that's supposed to be great. Any kind of space, if you look at the economic analysis about food in the home, food outside the home, people are spending a lot of money on food. We all know that, right? You know, what are you going to have for dinner? Tonight, you had Pizza Chicago. Great, but, you know. What if we have spaces that allow people to be more creative about serving food and preparing food? There's so many meal delivery and chef-type services here. What if that was then available to everybody to come? I hesitate to say food court. I know there's some way better phrase for that that you'll come up with. So that's the challenge that I wanted to issue. And then finally, the, you know, the environmental concerns and constraints are meaningful. And so I look forward to learning more about mitigation and frankly, what's possible. Talked about family places to live, yep. You know, traffic and transportation, I know will be addressed as part of the process. I do want to echo the very real problem with people living in their cars and RVs and the fact that much of that takes place in this part of our city. And I don't know that I or any of us has a great answer, but that has to be part of what we're designing here. Yeah. So I think that's it. I thank you all for the work that's begun. I agree with the speakers that more detail about what is there now. And then finally, I really want to see some real creativity about what's possible.
So I want to say thank you to the Citizens Advisory Panel for working so hard on this and meeting so many times and also to staff for all the work that you put in as well as the consultants. I really appreciate getting the Places Memo ahead of time, like on Thursday rather than today. So, and it was a very interesting memo, so thank you so much for that. I wanted to start with, I have to find it now. So what Mr. Collins said, Todd Collins said about schools, I did notice that there was a stakeholder meeting between somebody from the Palo Alto Unified School District. And I was just wondering, how is that, when you discuss with, when you are discussing the issues with them or what is planned, how does that get back to the school board or does it stay within that office? It sounds rather interesting that there was a discussion in a stakeholders' meeting, however, it didn't get back to the trustees. So at what point is there going to be a meeting like Concordia did where they went and presented to the board, to the school board, just to let them know what's happening here?
So we don't have that scheduled right now and we're happy to speak with Mr. Collins to understand whether there might be some opportunities where we can intersect. I know that the city has regular meetings and I've attended one of them several months ago now where it's the city-school liaison meeting. So immediately, that's a forum that we have available to us and that's a place where we've exchanged some ideas and that's where I first learned about this interest. So, you know, we can continue to explore that and as we go forward.
So through city-school liaison committee?
Yeah.
Would probably be the best place to do it at. All right. Oh, before you leave, the report also talks about neighborhood fabric. You know, my neighborhood fabric is very different. The definition is different from what yours might be. Can I hear what staff is and what staff is definition as well as the consultant's definition?
So it's a term that's used to sort of reflect back on that very idea that people identify with this area in certain ways. And we're not trying to define that in the existing conditions report. And that is something that will evolve through this process as we hear from the community as they respond to the different plan alternatives. But it's not a technical term. It's more of just recognizing and appreciating that there's a history here, that people have lived in this neighborhood for quite some time and that it has its own cultural and historical significance, small H, but also now, big H, historic.
So just also ensuring that you do have a community buy-in and community discussions in terms of determining what the community fabric or the neighborhood fabric is going to be?
Yeah, I mean, that's going to come out in the form of the plan that the council will ultimately be reviewing. If we didn't get that right, then I would expect that the council would, you know, course-correct us and make some changes to the plan that's ultimately presented before you.
Thank you. On page, packet page 12, where the MVCAP goals numbering, does the numbering indicate the level of importance or it's just random?
It's just a list of, it's just a list.
Okay, because if it was of a matter of importance based on the numbering, then I would want to move number five to become number two because number one is housing and the land use and then number five is ensuring that there's no gentrification or displacements of neighbors. So if there is an importance, I'd like to see that move up. I also noticed in the staff report that there are certain stakeholders that are looking for Palo Alto's El Camino to look like Mountain Views. I certainly hope that that goes through some environmental review for us also. Let me see here. There was a railroad that is on the property of 3001 El Camino. Does that portion of the railroad have any significant value?
So we're still working on our historic analysis.
That's a little bit further away.
It is.
But that's just the rail itself.
And so you're talking about the, and I don't know if this was a spur or if it was just part of the whole, you know, I have to check with Bob Moss on that.
So it actually, so the historical boundaries can extend out further than just the Frye's boundaries, parcel boundaries?
It could. Our study, or our historic analysis will be based on the study area and to the extent that there's any reference or suggestion that it continues beyond that, that will, you know, we'll chase that down a little bit to understand it, to the extent that it informs decisions that we would want to make to the study area.
So how does registering it with the county's historical, what is it, foundation or offices, how does that work? What is the process?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So it says, and it's eligible for listing in the California Register of Historical Resources. So what is the process to get it there, to be registered? Are we registered already?
Well, so it's not registered already.
It is?
It is not.
It's not?
And...
And can we expect or what is the process to get us there?
So the city at this point has not made any formal determination as to the historic significance of the property. And that's going to be vetted out through the council's review of the plan, the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan and the associated environmental document. So we're, you know, at this point, we have not, there's nothing, one, we don't have a complete report and two, the council hasn't endorsed that report yet.
The historical report?
Well, it was, it's the historic combined with the environmental determination that the council will make at some point as we get further along in this process.
Okay.
I'm not sure I'm satisfactorily answering the question or the concern that you may have. If there's, is it about, are you concerned about something taking place to the property before the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan is completed?
Not so much. Well, there's always that concern, but then also making sure, I want to kind of understand or have a ballpark figure of what the timeline is in order to have it registered. But I see that you have to do the EIR as well.
Yeah, we have to complete our process.
Yeah, so that's going to take a little bit of time. Okay. So on page 149, attachment E states, "Certain sites have been cleared by the different overseeing agencies. After the conclusion that the area is safe from VOCs and other hazardous chemicals, will there be continuing inspections in the future?"
I think it's too early for us to tell at this point. So Bob, we have vacancies, by the way, in our office.
On the toxics.
Jonathan Pyron, boss, or Rob?
I don't know how many of you have ever heard of the Barron Park Association Foundation, but we were given the right by the EPA and the Regional Water Quality Control Board to oversee the toxics in the Barron Park and eventually city area. This area is called COE, California Olive Emerson, and it is a superfund site. It was contaminated by toxics from HP and Varian. And the area has been, the area upstream in the research park has been cleaned up, but the water flows from the research park down basically to the underpass at Page Mill and Alma. And so the area which is, we're talking about tonight, is contaminated, okay? So you've got environmental review on the list of things to do, but anything which is built there, whether it be housing or retail, has to have at the very least vapor barriers underneath to prevent the toxics from getting into the building. Second, if you look at what's been done in Mountain View, classic example is Wisman's area, they built housing over a toxic plume.
Yes.
They put a vapor barrier over the plume. Within two years, the barrier failed and they had toxic fumes in the homes. So anything which is built in this area, you have environmental review, so I didn't talk about it tonight, but I will answer your questions. Anything which is built in this area, at the very least, has to have a vapor barrier and the interior should be inspected at least annually to make sure the vapor barrier hasn't failed. Some of the buildings, and you'll have to look at the map that shows where the high concentrations are, there are some hotspots in this particular area. The house itself which is built, any residential which is built, must also be protected against vapor intrusion because they've changed the toxic levels. Relatively low levels of TCE in the indoor air can cause birth defects among children. So it's a toxic area and you have to worry about it. The problem that Palo Alto has is the toxics in the groundwater in Palo Alto are overseen by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, not EPA. The water board is not very good compared to EPA and toxic controls. So be careful. And anything which is built there, vapor barriers, annual tests of the indoor air and make sure that it stays that way because, as I said, it failed in Mountain View and people could be killed literally.
Thank you, Bob.
So you've got to be careful.
Thank you for that knowledge from your experience. So I'm hoping that there will be monitoring involved, you know, I, reports should come back with the intentions of how to monitor such things and to keep, after all, these are housing and if this is a family neighborhood as well as the schools, et cetera. So we want to make sure that that is in our plan.
And I'll just note, as Bob was referencing, we will do an environmental impact report that, or we'll do the, yeah, I think we probably are looking at an EIR. And then that would include mitigation measures and those mitigation measures will be specific as to what needs to take place in order to mitigate those impacts.
Okay, health implications, thank you. Also on packet page 114, so it shows that it isn't proven that newer tech tenants settle for low amounts of parking. Tenants change for a building and usually leases can go on for 10 years with options to renew. So it's a negative impact to neighbors and it can be huge. So at this time, there doesn't seem to be any monitoring by the city to even establish a baseline, right? So example is the Visa Building. It's located on 385 Sherman. It has 88 parking spaces, but about 300 employees. And on a given day, I, we were told that they are actually getting daily permits, about 150 of it, 150 per day of these daily permits to provide for their employees visiting from San Francisco and Foster City. And as you heard some members of the public mention there today, Groupon and WeWorks, Groupon just moved on to California Avenue. So the building, they're still here and they amount to quite a bit of parking issues as well. And WeWorks, somebody said, what, 700 employees? So, you know, that alone also have issues in terms of parking. And I would hope that we're not really kind of believing that we don't need the parking. There's no data that shows people are relying less on automobiles. Instead, people are encouraged to move to or clean vehicles, so it doesn't decrease the numbers. On December 3rd, Mr. Arthur Keller submitted data derived from the US Census data showing one-year data sets for the year of 2017. The driver loan rate is 70.8%, car pool is at 10.3, 11.3%. And people who owns cars in Palo Alto, who owns cars, are 97% more, and they have more than one car most of... have more than one car most of the time. 88% of renters own cars also. So, I want to make sure that when you're analyzing all of this, that it is true data and is not based on the low amount of housing that we have now, or the low amount of buildings that we have, because it does increase depending on what comes in and what leaves. Let me see. I agree with what Tom said. Oh, also, in terms of cars parking on the street, it mentions that existing conditions and analysis memo from page, packet page 95 to 99 provides that at this time, parking capacity is not constrained in the park, in the planned area for street parking. However, street parking should be treated as excess space parking, extra only if needed, not a given for people to park over there. The city pays, for example, the city pays good money for the street sweeping, but a lot of the street sweepers can't get to the curb to sweep because there's cars parked over there, and it's parked there day in and day out. So I'm hoping that we review this very carefully so it does not impact neighborhoods with parking going, transiting into other areas. And I see I have a note that says that I'm at my 15 minutes.
Twenty now.
It's 20 now. So I do agree with what Tom said in terms of, you know, if we're going to be upzoning these lots and these parcels, then I do want to see that there is more affordable units, so increase the percentage of these units, whether it's for sale or for rent. The number of percentage should go to 20% at each, and to find ways for more 100% affordable housing. Lastly, I would really like to see, you know, we, we need institutional knowledge on this, on this, on this working group. So I, when Tom makes his motion, I'd really like to also add that we have persons who were on the group at this, when they were doing the sofa plan, to be incorporated to this. Would like, I'd like to see one person added, such as Karen Holman, and an alternate, Pat Burt, but those are both people who have worked and know the sofa plan inside out. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and thank you, everyone, for all your comments. A couple questions and some broader points. Tom was asking about some of the office mix, I think, and how much is there and stuff. I guess I have the same questions. Do we know about the retail mix? Like how many square feet of retail, what the mix is, how much of it our current codes would require us to preserve?
So, the Frye's site, it does have some specific standards that even though the zoning is RM now, the, the code does allow for the continuation of these uses, and it does stipulate a, a minimum amount of retail to be retained on the property. And, you know, we, we are doing our analysis based on, beyond the Frye's site, looking at county assessor records, our own records, to find out how much square footage of different types of uses are occupying that space.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And I think the same for the office uses. And one thing we've certainly heard from a lot of folks, they don't want any office here, or any more office. I think we do want to get some of the information from the landowners about how feasible that is to them, and what it would cost to either take away the office or maintain it, or whatever, kind of what, what that balances, sorry, just so we can be honest about, you know, what may be there in the future. Office is clearly valuable to folks who own it today, may not be willing to redevelop if they can't get that office back. So I'm just, just putting that out there, and I think we should be clear about that. On some of the retail issues, I do agree with Councilmember Cormac that we should be a little more ambitious and creative about the retail uses and some of the community amenities that could, amenities that could be in this plan, whether it's a school, whether it's a local grocery shop, whatever it is that people imagine and dream for here, I think we should, should be clear about that. But I think we should also do what Tom suggested and have kind of a market study about its feasibility also. We've had the experience of three somewhat problematic grocery stores required in Palo Alto, and finally, it seems like they're getting their feet and going, but I just don't want us to repeat that exercise. And I think we should be careful if we do ask for something in a plan, do we have the data to back it up that, that it will actually succeed? Do we have, one gentleman asked about recent or ongoing commercial projects or ones that are coming online soon. Do we have a data, data around that?
Yeah, we, I mean, yes.
Okay.
That's what we do.
All right. Maybe I missed it, thank you. Councilmember Cormac mentioned naturalizing the creek. I agree, I would like to see an option that includes that. I did read some early indications that it may be difficult for a few reasons. Let's sort of figure out what would it take to overcome that and what the trade-offs are. I think that was one of the highest requested things by people in these surveys. That's, that's really interesting, and I think could be a good benefit. And I guess kind of my final question is a little bit on scheduling and what happens after we do the plan. So, ideally, you know, we finish this plan up by next year, we sign off of it on council, and we say, "That's it, go." I think as we move forward in this process, it should be helpful to begin setting expectations for the community and future councils about what we can expect, right? It's not like we're going to sign off on the plan and construction's going to start the day after. It may be many, many years, and I think we need to kind of document and, and timeline that a bit. And then, similar to that, also look at, do we want kind of check-ins or forcing functions on certain things, right? So maybe we say, we know we want the school and the retail amenities first, or maybe it's the housing part first, or maybe it's the transportation connections part first. And what can we do in a planning process to actually incentivize that and begin building those phases out in a predictable way? I think that would be helpful for our process. Those are my big kind of question comments. A few small things, I'll just add my voice to. Definitely agree, if we think there is a problem with recreational vehicle dwelling in this neighborhood, this may be a site where we can begin to solve that. I know San Jose is starting a big safe parking program, and East Palo Alto has done something similar. Construction impacts, I haven't heard about that, but just kind of understanding what's going to be constructed and when, and how we mitigate that for the neighborhood and for traffic. Cut through traffic, a couple people have looked at, and if we can mitigate that on the backend as well. People have mentioned the bike connections to Midtown, maybe Alamo Verde, supportive of that. But I'd also say, we should look at connections across El Camino and potentially to Calav. So Councilmember DuBois has mentioned Ash Street, and I think Portage was the other one. Page Mill and El Camino are clearly big barriers to those sides of the city, and so if we can address that in some way, that's helpful. And then, oh, one last big thing. Park Boulevard. I think there's a lot of, sorry for the phrase momentum here, about connections to Calav, whether it's by bike, foot, car, and Park Boulevard is really the main axis here. And I think we need to kind of double down on what the approach is there. It may be some bike lanes, it may be expanded sidewalks, maybe it's a shuttle service, I, I'm not sure. I just see that kind of as the central access, and if we are going to see increased development here, it's clearly linked to the commercial and transit amenities on Calav, and so let's really consider that, that connection at Park Boulevard. But otherwise, you know, thank you very much, there's a lot of good stuff in here. One thing I will say, actually, just last thought and I'll finish up. One of the priorities was environmental and kind of green considerations, and I didn't see so much of that coming through yet. And the creek was one of the main ideas, otherwise there are ideas about green space. But I'm wondering if there are kind of creative amenities that could promote sustainability and, and a more healthy ecosystem. That'd be nice to hear, too. It's one of the priorities, and I just, I just didn't see much there. But otherwise, looking forward to continue working on this, and thank you all on the working group for your effort here.
Greg, you haven't spoken yet.
So, I wanted to thank the working group for your work on this. I think it's, it's been very important, and it looks like you guys made a lot of really good progress, so thank you for that. Also, I wanted to thank staff for you guys for getting this together, and of course, all the residents for coming out. So, I, I agree with a lot of this, and I'll give you kind of some of my thoughts. So I, I think it's really important that this is, this remains kind of a vibrant and become a more bikeable, walkable neighborhood. That's, I think a lot of residents came in and talked about that, but I think that's actually a very important thing, and we want to kind of emphasize here. And I think Councilmember DuBois said a good thing about the small office space. There's actually a lot of small business in this area, and I think there's a definite dearth of need, or there's a dearth of small office space, and there's a, there's a real need for that. So I would support that, that effort as well. I think Councilmember Cormac said something about kind of communal or kind of co-living space, and I think that actually makes a lot of space. You get a lot of density out of that without having a large FAR. So that could be a nice transition from some of the commercial to the residential R1 neighborhood. One thing I've been thinking about is, you know, at one point, not anymore, but at one point, Frye's was one of the largest revenue sources for the city. And of course, today, it's a shadow of itself. And so one thing that makes me wonder is, you know, what's going to replace it? You know, the city's already having some financial difficulties, and so definitely having a revenue source is going to be important. Now, I look at this site, and I think this is one of the nice, this is one of the nice areas where the plan is actually very, it's on natural boundaries. You have El Camino, you have Oregon Expressway, Page Mill, you have Alma, right? So there's a lot of natural boundaries to this, to this area plan. And, and so, I would be in favor of seeing much, much stronger presence of retail, especially along El Camino and Page Mill. I think Page Mill and El Camino actually has some of the highest traffic in Palo Alto. I think it's actually number one intersection. I read somewhere that the ATD store, the AT&amp;T store on Page Mill and El Camino actually is the, one of the biggest, or maybe the biggest, revenue generators in the country for AT&amp;T. So, I think, I think there's some, there's some precedence for having strong retail. So I would like to see more strong retail there, along those two busy corridors, so El Camino and, and Page Mill, or, or an expressway. And I think the other thing that Vice Mayor Fine talked about, and I, I think it's actually a really good thing, and we should really look at it, is the fact that if you ever go to or from the, the Calav station in the morning or the evening, one thing you'll see is there's a ton of people walking from the Calav station to the various places along Park Boulevard and vice versa. And it's, you know, as Calav station has become more and more popular, you're starting to see a lot of foot traffic on that street. So that, that could also be a potential area of, of retail, perhaps. And I would strongly discourage the working group from putting housing against the train tracks. You know, I think in general, the housing, if we put housing on the site, should be more in the interior and towards other kind of quieter, quieter areas versus trying to push it against like Page Mill or El Camino or the train tracks. Because I think the train tracks, I think, I think housing kind of likes quieter spaces, but retail businesses like busier areas. So I would encourage some thought about that as the working group considers where to place stuff. But anyways, back to what Vice Mayor Fine was saying in terms of that connectivity of Park Boulevard to the Calav station, I think that could be dramatically enhanced. Right now, you walk along it, it's kind of a desolate walk, right? It's kind of, yeah, some people walk there, and it, and there's like, not much going on there, and yet there's, there's so much foot traffic. There's actually, there's a lot of lost opportunity there. You can imagine if there was stronger retail in that presence, it could do quite well. But, yeah, you walk along it right now, and it's kind of a, especially at night, it's kind of a scary area. But I see a lot of people walk it, just because it's, it's a train stop. They take that little bridge across. I'm not sure if you guys know what I'm talking about, but if you guys don't, you guys should go visit it sometime. Anyways, just wanted to encourage something for the working group to think about. And I think economic feasibility is also really important, because I think, I think Ventura really deserves great community spaces, great parks, make, we want, makes this place very, very livable and a, and a great place to raise a family. Because I know a lot of kind of young families in this area. This is one of the more affordable areas of Palo Alto. And so you do get kind of the newer families here. And so I, I think it's important that, that we also consider the economic viability to, to pay for all these facilities, to kind of express up this building, or put in a community center, or put in all the different amenities that everyone's asked for. The question is, how do you finance, how do you pay for it? So I think the economic feasibility is actually really important, because we could make great plans, but if we can't pay for it, it almost doesn't matter. So I think that's actually another key factor, and I'd love to see the working group trying to take that on, so that by time we get a kind of plan from the, from the working group to the council, it's kind of more, more fully baked. And I've heard a lot also about the RV issues. I mean, you could see a lot of it as you drive along El Camino, I think in the Olive or Pepper area, I forget what it is, but it has like a ton of them, and I, I do wonder about that, and perhaps staff can, can make note and, and figure out how to rectify some of this. And then, in terms of the bike connectivity, I, I fully support the idea of having better bike connectivity. I think the hard parts, I think El Camino's not so bad, but the parts that are really hard are across Alma Street, of course, so some sort of underpass, overpass, and of course, Ash Street, that's also a little bit tough. But anyways, I, I think overall, it's looking, it's headed in the right direction. I really appreciate all the time that the working group has put on this, really appreciate it. Hope you're able to, you know, I think you guys are getting a lot of input, so hopefully you guys could make sense of all this and make it all happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a couple comments here and then go back to Tom. But, first one is, I, I concur with a lot of what's been said here already. The thing that Tom, Todd Collins said, I think, I think the, the working group, you know, if you, I, I think the school, having a school here is fair game to consider, right? I wouldn't shy, if you don't think, if you don't think a school should be there, then fine, right? But I wouldn't shy away from that because that's the school district, and this is the city and stuff like that. I think, you know, you should, you should be willing to consider that. I got a question on retail, which is, of, of people who live here in Ventura, right? I know we got a lot of visitors tonight, too. How many people do most of your grocery shopping at Grocery Outlet? And how many people, how many people do most of your grocery shopping at someplace other than Grocery Outlet? Calav, Molly Stones? Russian Grocery? Okay. Russian Grocery, okay. Thank you. And then the other thing I was going to say about parking is, you know, staff is so tired of hearing me say this, but the consultants haven't heard me say this yet, right? You know, usually when you see an optimal number of 85% parking utilization, usually that's in context of some studies that were done and cited by Donald Shoup as optimal for circulation in commercial areas, right? I think, I'm going to, I'm going to propose that efficient circulation, right, is not sort of the top priority in residential neighborhoods. So, so I think we, we ought to, people ought to keep that in mind. And as for, as for folks that think that, you know, we have an oversupply of parking this area, just take, take a look at Curtinor Avenue on your way home tonight and, and see if you still agree with that. Okay. And now I will go back to Tom.
So, I attempted to email Beth my motion, I don't know if she can. Can't get it on the board? Okay.
You're going to have to do it at the school.
So, first of all, I neglected to say thank you, so let me correct that. Thank all of you. Really appreciate you spending time on this. So my motion, I tried to capture a few of the points I made. So this is the motion. Update the project direction to include, number one, removing the Stanford playing fields from park space counted for Ventura use. Number two, to evaluate and propose policies around three things: higher required inclusionary housing, workforce housing, and three, to prevent, preventing displacement of existing residents. So the third point is to evaluate and propose office size limits to encourage small office uses. And then the fourth point was to evaluate and propose an objective accounting for economic value provided to property owners as part of the specific plan versus current zoning and the value of any community amenities. So I notice this is.
Could you speak further?
Can't see the motion. I'm happy to repeat it or answer questions.
One more time.
So my, my motion is to update the project direction to include, number one, removal of the Stanford playing fields as park space for Ventura. Number two, evaluate and propose policies around higher required inclusionary housing, workforce housing, and preventing displacement of existing residents. Number three, evaluate and propose office size limits to encourage small office uses. And then, number four, evaluate and propose an objective that accounts for the economic value provided to property owners by the specific plan versus current zoning. value provided to property owners by the specific plan versus current zoning, as well as the value of any community amenities. And so I got a second just to speak to it real quick. The key word I think here is evaluate, you know, I'm really asking staff to evaluate these things. On the last point, number four, about economic value, I think a specific plan is ultimately in negotiation. And we have some state laws that are being discussed right now, which could override this whole effort, or it could take away part of the value. But whether that happens or not, we really need to understand what that value is. And so we need a better financial view of what the coordinated plan means. Otherwise, we're potentially just giving away money. So I hope my colleagues will support these areas.
Care to speak to your second?
Thank you. Can I read over your shoulder, Tom? Okay, so just going through this, yeah, also thank you, a lot of good work in here, but I still think a lot of work to be done and I hope our comments help out in that process. So on the motion, just going through it one by one, so the first line item is to remove the Stanford playing fields. I think Councilmember DuBois made a good argument about why that shouldn't be considered green recreation space. And I think that's one of the areas this plan really needs to focus on, but I think most of us are probably in agreement on that. On evaluating proposing policies around higher required inclusionary housing, workforce housing, and preventing displacement, I think those are reasonable. I think the issue is going to be, what are the trade-offs? If we want a higher inclusionary percentage, does that mean that we're flexing on the height limit or on parking or on densities? And so if we can get the feasibility study behind that, that's helpful, I think. So we can begin to test out and tease out what assumptions we want to change in order to achieve more affordable housing. That's great. The third one's the one I'm maybe the most uncomfortable with, and not because I'm uncomfortable with the policy, I just wonder if this council wants to have a policy of encouraging small office spaces and what that means. I don't know. And I'm willing to explore it. I just don't really know what that means as a policy choice for us, right? Because in this area, there are a couple of small startups and small offices, absolutely. There's also some very large ones. And I'm not sure I could tell you tonight what the impacts or differences are from those to me as a resident here in Palo Alto, whether one is much worse or better for me. I'm not sure. I think you didn't mention in your motion, Councilmember DuBois, but I think it's worth just as a note, there's another issue beyond just kind of more the commercial office of medical, dental, psychological, personal services offices, which I think Palatans have brought up across the city, but maybe has more play here. So it's just a note. And then the final piece is a value and propose an objective of accounting for economic value. I think it's certainly more complicated than just, you know, we're upzoning, there's some value, and so we should get back X amount of that for community services. But on all these fronts, whether it is office, whether it is retail, whether it is housing, we need to understand if we put in place certain zoning changes that we want to see, will those actually get built? And that's up to the market, that's not up to us. And so we need to understand, are we putting in place the proper zoning and the proper program incentives to actually get those outcomes that we as a community decide on? And I think that's the thrust of your point four. So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of why I'm supporting this. I would just tease out to you all three, sorry, to my colleagues, whether point three about the small offices is a policy choice we're in support of, I just don't know yet.
I'll speak for a second. I think the intent is, I mean, I think, seems to me like a reasonably broad, I mean, a reasonably broad directive that would give staff a fair amount of latitude in how they approach it, right? So I think that's okay, right? I'm assuming that your intent is to figure out how to protect sort of community services, community-serving services as opposed to, you know, sort of, you know, global-serving kind of businesses, right?
Yeah, the more I thought about it, it's really about limiting office size and not building a building that could be turned into one 50,000 square foot thing. And this, I think, would address the small medical psychologists and local businesses.
You want some psychologists, not, you know, a new Google office.
Well, but again, if it's limited by office size, I think it could be a small startup, it could be a lot of things, but it's limited by size.
Allison, do you have your light on there?
I don't, but may I speak to it?
Yes, please.
And potentially offer an amendment? Okay. Yeah, most of this seems reasonable. I mean, absolutely, the Stanford playing field should be, I mean, just taken out of the park calculation, that's no problem. Could you just, could I ask the maker of the motion, evaluate and propose, did you say options for, or did you just have those three things there?
He's not listening.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois? On your motion, when you said evaluate and propose, did you say options for, or did you just list evaluate and propose, higher required inclusionary, dot, dot, dot?
I said policies around those things.
Policies. Okay, so that's plural? Okay, that's fine. You know, I'm prepared to support this to learn more. I'm not convinced I understand the intent or the, you know, the range of office size limits. I guess if I think about those of them that are closer to a residential area, certainly medical services is something that is, you know, absolutely an issue all over the community. So open to seeing what that is, but I'm not committed to, you know, an answer on that Objective accounting for economic value provided to property uses. What would that look like? That's a 100-page report? That's a two-page summary? I'm sorry, I just don't quite understand it.
I think that's up to staff, but right now there's not, not any real discussion about how much value this specific area provides over what's already there.
So you're looking at the existing conditions or proposed?
Existing zoning, I guess. If we didn't do anything, right? And we're proposing to change a bunch of things, loosen restrictions.
Okay, so you're asking for more information on the existing condition?
The economics.
Okay.
Some of those economics would pay for a lot of these benefits we're talking about.
Certainly willing to see that. Just back on office size limits, I think there was a reference about small office space and I can't quite recall, but I think they're saying there was less demand for it here in Palo Alto than there had been in the packet. So office size limits, that's a very, you know, that's a very broad thing, so it's possibly we want to give them a little bit more information. And then finally, I'd offer a friendly amendment. I'd like to see, you know, in that summer timeframe, the three scenarios brought to council at the same time, you know, just after the working group. So is that something that the maker and secondor would be willing to consider?
I'm sorry, three scenarios?
Okay, so currently, if you look at the plan, the alternatives come to the working group and then we just sort of get given one in August. You know, based on the number of times, you know, the importance of this, I think it's reasonable for it to come back to us with, you know, those scenarios so we can take a look and understand if they're headed in the right direction. I realize it's another meeting, I'm sorry. But I would just hate to get towards the end of the process and then, you know, not be in a place where we're all comfortable with it. Yes, please. Sure.
Hey Jonathan, as a point guard on the working group, how would you guys feel about bringing us three scenarios as opposed to one?
So I think it's our intent to bring three scenarios and work with the working group to refine these. And then we go to the community meeting where we would have these. So we would go to the community meeting and there would be a conversation with the community about what's a preferred option. And then we would have another working group meeting to sort of understand the feedback that we received and the working group would send a recommended option to the council. So when the council gets it, you'll see the working group preferred plan. And it may not be perfect, there may be some like notes that will help refine it further. But you would also understand what was being contemplated by the broader community. And we would fully expect that the council would say, you know, maybe borrow from this one and borrow from this one and go do this.
Okay, so let me just, my understanding, you're going to bring three, but you're going to have a recommended one?
It's a preferred, you know, so we're trying to go through the process of vetting the stuff out and then tee it up for the council for, here's what, you know, the group thinks is the preferred approach. But you don't have to go with that preferred approach. You can say it's 80% there, but we want to see some of this over here, or, you know, it's...
My concern is we're going to, you know, any process, it's unlikely that we're going to end up with something really dramatic, right? And I want to see something that really does challenge us to think about what we can do here. So that's my concern, is that we'll end up with something that is appropriately, you know, makes everyone somewhat happy and somewhat unhappy. And we might lose the opportunity to see what would it look like if we really pushed the boundaries in a few areas.
So if, I'm sorry.
Let me, if I could, Ed Chikot over here in the corner, behind the sofa. The issues that the council is raising, I do want to note, maybe significant policy issues beyond, certainly beyond what could simply be accomplished through a conversation. Quite frankly, there, it appears that there are significant policy issues around displacement, regulatory controls, inclusionary housing, that require a level of analysis, both via planning, potentially legal analysis. Calling into question to a certain extent, our regulatory ability to require. So there was an earlier reference to ultimately, a coordinated area plan can be a negotiation. Now, the reality is we have multiple owners and so as a result, it's not quite as straightforward as that. The, I think the best approach that staff might be able to suggest here is based upon the motion and action by council tonight, that staff take it back and evaluate what additional work would be required to respond to this direction. This is somewhat unique, but really not, in that clearly the direction will require additional work, which involves additional cost. And so, as well as time to complete the work. So that all needs to be factored into how best to balance the multiple objectives that the city has in completing this scope of work. So all of that, perhaps a long-winded way of saying that I think we need to take this direction for the purpose of coming back to you with sorting out how best to pursue the issues being raised.
Let me see if I can summarize what I just heard, right? I think, I think what I heard, what I think I heard from Allison is that, you know, look, we've got 60 acres. We got, some people want this, some people want that, some people want this, some people want this other thing, some people want this other stuff. And so, you know, there's sort of a strong sort of inclination in government to sort of give everybody a little piece of it and it comes up with a patchwork quilt, right? And she's asking, look, can we see some alternatives that don't do that specifically, that are sort of more swing for the fence kind of alternatives? Is that what I think I heard? And...
Summarizing what Ed said will be more difficult.
And Ed said, you know, it's complicated.
So if I could add...
How do we get, how do we get what Allison asked for?
If I could add to the city manager's comments, I think what he's proposing is another step that we have an opportunity to take the ideas here, which are interesting and meaty and somewhat complex, and do a scoping conversation back with the council. So we would come back and talk to you about some basic parameters around feasibility, costs, time, legality, constraints, et cetera, opportunities, and then have council have a chance to digest that before we're fully sent off to develop a series of policy proposals.
Yes?
City Attorney's great at translating my...
And I agree with the suggestion. It's fairly complex and ambitious what's been proposed.
I'll add my voice to that support. And I'll note, I've been corrected, we have two scenario plans that we were going to study. And then the third one was going to be the preferred plan, that was presumably going to be some kind of a hybrid approach from that. So if, you know, we're happy to do as many studies as you want us to explore, of course there is, you know, some timing and cost implications with that. What I'd like to do is continue with the plan that we've laid out and continue to engage the working group and our consultants with the process that we have and quickly return to the council that is responsive to the motion.
So do you feel like you can still do that under Tom's motion?
Well, I think we can continue to move forward. The question is, you know, it's, if, when we get council direction to do something different, we'll just need to pivot and understand what the costs and timing constraints might be on that. But I don't think we lose any ground by advancing our effort.
Just wanted to take on great separation too?
He said preferred alternative.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Anyway, so are we going to, no, no, it's fine. I mean, I guess I'll just ask Mr. Late, so under the scenario that is described here, you will bring us more than one thing to look at in August or only one thing?
So we would work with the working group to develop two planned scenarios, present that to the community at a workshop, come back to the working group to develop a refined plan, option three, and then we would go to the city council saying, here's our work, this is what we think is the preferred plan. And along the way, you would understand how we got there, including the two other alternatives that we explored.
Okay. I'm willing to withdraw my motion as long as someone heard me say, I want one of those options to be a real challenge, you know, to all of our thinking.
I'd like to see if the maker and the secondor would accept amendment, and that's to add a member to the NVCAP working group with SOFA-coordinated planning experience to provide institutional knowledge guidance.
So if I can just add a comment before the council decides on that, the municipal code is clear in how many members are a part of the working group. 14 members is the maximum number, we have 14 members. So if you wanted to do that, it would be a part of an amendment to the municipal code to expand that. And that's doable. I just want you to know there's a process for getting there.
Would that be a voting member? If they were there to just do, to provide guidance? Given there's the historical...
We don't, the way it's set up, my recollection is that it's, we're not really voting, it's different than the CAC, which had a different process. This is a working group. There's not a chair or a co-chair. It's a different process than what you may be familiar with, with the comprehensive plan that we had. Our working group meetings are open to the public and members are, community members are welcome to participate and we would encourage that.
Senator Junior, your team was trying to speak there.
Well, we've been through a lot of background already and done a great deal of forming as a group. We are, of course, open to all of the wisdom of everyone who has done a plan prior to us, but I find it a little bit off-putting that at this point, with the number of hours we put in to reading and studying and researching and our core knowledge of our own neighborhood, that somehow we need someone to swoop in and save us from our process.
Oh, I think you're taking that wrong, actually. I'm just saying that somebody who has experience with a SOFA-coordinated plan, they can come in and provide some guidance, but it's not to reset the direction. And my understanding is at this point, your process is mostly data collecting. So moving forward, there's the development and the planning, you know. So I wouldn't say that we're kind of trying to overstep or trying to swoop in or anything like that. It's a community-building opportunity.
So, yeah?
I'd like to speak about, a little bit about the process. I have appreciated all the input from the community and I have appreciated the council input, but you haven't heard much from our working group. And with all due respect, I had some things that I wish to say, especially about the historical resource that was just produced by the staff. I think this is a critical item and I think that this changes the scope in some ways because now we should be looking at this item as a critical item in developing the entire site. I really think that one of the motions, I didn't get a chance to say this earlier, but one of the motions that should be considered is adding a subcommittee to specifically look at this item, a three or four person, which I've mentioned already to this group before, not only looking at the Frye's building itself, but at the total Nev cap area. There are several buildings which were... There are several buildings, which were mentioned by other people tonight, and there are other homes in the area that reflect an historical nature of this particular site.
Hey, Terry?
Yes?
Can you hold that thought, and I'll come back? Because Lydia's got a proposal, a proposed motion, and I want to clear that up, and then we'll come back to historical stuff. I wasn't sure what you were going to... So, you have a proposal from Lydia over here to the maker and the secondor. Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Thank you. So Lydia, I do feel it's a little bit tough at this point to, to add somebody, and the fact that the meetings are open, I think people can come and participate, and are people limited, and the public, from speaking?
You know, it's not, it's not all that different from council meetings, there's a time limit.
One, one shot to speak.
Yeah, there's a, that's right. It's at the end of the, the meeting, we have oral communications.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I prefer not to include it in this motion, if there's a second for it.
Do you wish to seek a second for your motion?
You know, in that case, then, I would instead like to ask that you change your oral communications to the beginning, the beginning, and then have another opportunity. And so when they hear what has been communicated in terms of presentation, and in terms of the working group working together, they can make comment again. If that's an inclusive, well, I have a motion, I am going to withdraw my motion, but I'd like to...
Are you making a second motion?
Yes, please.
Does the maker and the secondor accept the second motion?
For the meetings.
Jonathan, is that something you could be flexible on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to work with our team to see what we can do to enhance public participation. And we recently had to increase our working group meetings from two hours to three hours, because we weren't having enough time for the working group to go through its process. We absolutely want this to be a community-engaged process, and I'm happy to work with the working group on that issue.
So, so, are you accepting...
I'd like to hear what Rebecca has to say.
Okay, Rebecca.
Hi, my name is Parker, and my pronouns are she and her. I just wanted to say that, to remind everybody that you can also email, and we do read your emails, so you don't have to squeeze everything into your little two-minute time allotment. Please, 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 write us novels. We will read them, I promise. At least I will.
Tom.
Yeah, so again, Lydia, I think let's vote on it separately, if there's a second.
You wish to seek a second for your motion?
Yes, please. It's a more inclusive process.
Seeing, seeing no second.
And it dies. All right, thank you.
And, I, for what it's worth, I agree with Tom. I understand the issue, I'm satisfied with Jonathan taking it under advisement. I'm loath to have the council micromanage the processes of the working group. Okay, with that, we return to Terry, who was, sorry. With that, we return to Terry, who was talking about the historical significance of the cannery.
Really quick, I'd like to finish up what I wanted to say, and that is, again, I think it's critical that the historical aspect be looked at, at the entire site, and not just the Fry's building. Next thing I'll mention really quickly, I'd like to reemphasize what... Sorry, someone fell. Someone fell. I'll try to summarize very quickly. The next thing I'd just like to reemphasize is what Karen Holman and Pat Burt said earlier about following the SOFA process. I think this was an ideal development that occurred in downtown Palo Alto, and it was, it was shown to us as a principled way of conducting our process. And I think that we've, we've kind of gotten off track, and I think we should revisit that, and follow that process as best we can, because that way, we ensure that the community is involved, and also the working group as well, that we all have input. And lastly, and not least, is I would really like to see a PAUSD, that's the school district employee added. I know that's maybe impossible, but maybe they could be an advisory to the group, because not to have them involved when you're talking about a major area where you might add hundreds of children to an area, I work at the school district, if you don't include them, you're missing out on a great opportunity to have their involvement in the planning of this area. And I recommend it highly. Thank you.
Jonathan, can you, can you, can you, can you think about how to sort of make sure that PAUSD is appropriately involved in the process?
Yeah, so again, I think it's through the city and school liaison meetings, you know, people have an idea of what kind of development we are contemplating for this area, but we actually haven't, you know, designed that yet. I mean, there's a lot of speculation as to what's anticipated. We know from the housing element that there's some 300 units, but we haven't done those numbers yet, at all.
You may want to consider, at the appropriate point in time, doing something a little more close, a little more broad, broader-band communication than the city-school meeting, which is once a month, or something like that.
Happy to do that.
Any further comment on Tom's motion? Greg?
Yeah, so I didn't realize the working group didn't get a chance to speak, so I know some people have spoken, but I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on this, but, can you guys hear me? Hello? Okay. So, I didn't realize the working group didn't, some people in the working group didn't get a chance to speak on this, and I, I think they put a lot of time into it, so I was wondering if there's a, if anyone else has a thought on this, otherwise. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, we read email, too, so...
Doria.
Sure, so I think you wanted to know if, couldn't quite hear you still, so, but I, I think the staff has been doing the heavy lifting on this, in this effort, not the working group. I think as, as much as people have been diligent about doing the work that has been presented to us, I think, this is included as one of our working group meetings, and so was the earlier community meeting. I would be in favor of adding more meetings, and maybe invite the very generous offer volunteers who had been on the downtown SOFA. Maybe they could, we could add two extra meetings where they could come lend a hand, if we don't want to add them as regular members. I feel like we could be doing a little bit more, actually.
Okay, so I had a few, a few other things. Okay, I just wanted to bring that out. And then, the second thing is, I actually agree with Councilmember Cormac. I would actually also like to see something bold. Politically, it may not be possible, because often what happens is, is something that kind of makes everyone not happy, or unhappy, some kind of bland, but I actually like Allison's thought, and so I, I would like to see something like that, although politically, I realize that may not be possible. I do have a question for staff, and really has to do with Tom's first part of the motion. So what does it mean that we take out the playing fields? What does that mean?
It's, it, nothing, really. We're just trying to present what's in the area, and we didn't mean to overstate the open space, so we can pull that out without any kind of consequence.
Okay, so whether it's in or not in, doesn't matter?
No.
Okay, okay. And then, and then, this is one comment on medical offices. So we, you know, we reviewed the residential permit parking, the RPP, residential permit parking program in Southgate, and in Southgate, they actually have a lot of small medical offices. And I don't know if the council here remembers, well, maybe some people weren't here on council at the time, but there was a lot of angst over that, because with medical offices, you have, you know, like software engineers, sometimes they work from home, they work remotely, sometimes they don't show up for work. You know, for medical offices, everyone has to show up for work, and you have patients coming in and out all day long. So, in Southgate, people had a lot of angst over it. So I don't, I don't, I think I'm actually with Tom on this, I think we want to keep it a little more broad. I think there is a need for small offices, I think we should, we want to encourage more of that, but I don't think we necessarily want to peg it to medical offices, because I also heard, Southgate, a lot of pushback about medical offices as well. So I think, I think, I think the motion the way it is, is, is fine.
With that, would you vote on the motion, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmembers Niss, and, that's it, with Councilmember Niss absent, six here. With that, we are approaching the end of the formal program tonight. I think I'm gonna go back to the city manager and see if you want to, Ed, you want to make any wrap-up comments, or...
I think only, we've covered a lot of ground here. I know that initially, there might be some question as to whether we could fill the meeting with interior issues. Clearly, we could. And so perhaps, in that regard, time well spent. Thank you.
So with that, I want to thank the working group for all their effort, and the staff, and thank you to all the neighborhoods for coming out and listening to us, and doing this till 9:30 at night, and let's, let's move forward. Thanks again. Thanks to council.